A little bit after we get this meeting started, we are going to heaven. And we have the prayer, before we go quick, just when we have the prayer, then we'll have you ladies in our pledge. Are we now live? That's it, we're good to go, so thank you everybody for being here. I want to call the Griffin County School Board meeting order on September first. Here at the stadium at six o'clock. If everyone would put their laptop devices on silent or turn them off, we would appreciate those that are online. If you will keep yourselves muted until you need to talk. At this time, I would like to turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Brown, for our school spotlight.
Mr. Chair, thank you so much for the opportunity to represent our school spotlight. We started this over a year ago, and we are excited that we have today, we have represented each school in our school district. So today, we are happy, we are excited, we are glad to spotlight the Griffin Regional College and Career Academy, as well as program challenge. So our first spotlight will be the Griffin Regional College and Career Academy. How many scholars attend your school? Three hundred and sixty-five for the fall 2020 semester. GACS has a total of one hundred and twenty-three scholars. SACS has a total of one hundred and twenty-nine scholars that attend there. And the others are from Jackson, Georgia, Pike County, and the AZ Kelsey has one scholar that attends the Region College and Career Academy. What is your school mascot? We do not have a mascot, but our motto is Preparation Reads Opportunity. How many faculty staff members work at your school? We have three high school instructors, one peer professional, twenty Southern Crescent Technical College instructors, four boarding college instructors, five Griffin Regional College and Career Academy staff members, and three Regional College and Career Academy technical academic education staff members. A quote from the principal on our U level being the proud central school. I am extremely proud to be a part of this wonderful program that provides a variety of opportunities for all GACS scholars. Whether they are the student that wishes to get a jumpstart in their college career, with doing enrollment credits, the scholar that wishes to earn a technical certificate or diploma and go directly into the workforce after high school, or to continue a technical degree, or the scholar that wishes to graduate under alternative option and complete their ninth and tenth grade year of academics, and then pursue a technical program in a highly demanding highway field. The possibilities are endless for students in Griffin's Fall County schools. And like our motto states, Preparation Reads Opportunity, and the GRCCA prepares scholars for life. That in itself makes me extremely proud, especially when you have scholars that graduated with associate degrees, certified points in technicians, certified nurse aides, certificates in welding, German apprentices, and thirty-plus boot camp academics, and the list goes on. We welcome business and opportunity showcase all of the accomplishments of our students. What good things are going on at school socially and education? The GRCCA has wonderful and dedicated staff that are all eager to assist and meet the needs of our scholars. We have a student center available for our students and socially distanced but yet socialized. We offer tutors in conjunction with our college partners who teach and promote influential skills. We have an ambassador program that offers leadership opportunities. We have fabulous technical labs that offer real life competitions recognized by employers. Our new aviation hangar is open for students interested in flight operations, aviation maintenance, and unmanaged air assistance, and undoubtedly one of a kind in Georgia for high school students. Ladies and gentlemen, we present the 2020 Spotlight to Griffin Regional College and Career Academy. All right, program challenge, are you in the building? All right. Program challenge, how many scholars attend your school? We currently have two hundred and forty-three gifted identified scholars enrolled at program challenge. The scholars come to us one day a week from eleven elementary schools. We provide a group activities that promote critical and creative thinking. What is your school mascot? We do not have a mascot, but our motto is Spark the Future Challenge to Mind. How many faculty staff members work at your school? We have four teachers, they are Dr. Dunbar, Ms. Marty Bay, Ms. Amy Brown, and Ms. Kara Cook. Also included is our secretary, Ms. Lynn Bay, and our custodian, Ms. Toni Weston. A quote from the principal or the director of the school. As executive director of elementary education, I am extremely proud to serve and support program challenge for several reasons. Firstly, I am so proud of the hard work and wonderfully creative intellectual carries and remarkable collaborative gifted elementary scholars that participate in the program. We have nearly three hundred gifted scholars in kindergarten through fifth who inspire me and so many others every day to demonstrate innovation, to boldly push the frontiers of their own intellectual and academic prowess, and develop new and different opportunities to serve the community and each other in a manner that improves the world around them. Whether it's learning to utilize intensive forensic science, or creating video animations who articulate their points of view on important topics they've researched, or calculating the statistical probabilities of weather-related phenomena, or investigating and solving real-world problems through audits of the mind service projects, or even demonstrating for our community partners their immense interpersonal communication skills of the mind service project. Through the great Griffin Shake experience, our program challenge campus scholars continues to show the world that there are no limitations to the heights that our Griffin Spark scholars can soar to. Our program challenge scholars intently outperform their great recruits throughout the region, state, and country on mountainous heights. Every time I observe a class at program challenge, I am reminded of the highly intellectual, wonderfully collaborative, ever-courty selfless and service-oriented scholars that permeate the Griffin Spark academy. You never say it, Dr. Spark. Your Spark academy tools is. Another reason I am so proud to serve and support program challenge is due to the most dedicated scholar center, high professional, and exemplary team of teachers and staff I have ever had the privilege to serve in. Program challenge teachers, Mrs. Marty Bay, Dr. Dunbar, Mrs. Amy Brown, and Mrs. Kara Cook, professional assistant, Mrs. Lynn Bay, and head custodian, Ms. Toni Weston, are the absolute cream of the crop when it comes to maintaining the highest quality relationships with scholars and each other, modeling the highest, making decisions focused on student needs, planning, and with precision seeing expectations and thinking outside the box to broaden the scholar's perspective and experience for the benefit of their long and lifelong learning success. Our program challenge scholars are immensely better for these stellar professions. So many program challenge alumni and their families continually reach back to us and express how well-positioned they were in success in school, community, and life due to their past work with program challenge staff and their passion for this mission in the program. This is no surprise given how much time, effort, attention to detail, and care for the scholars that our past and current program challenge staff have exhibited for twenty-five thousand years in the history of the program. In that time, educators from around Georgia have come to visit our center, including us, to learn about how well the program is running. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, and children of all ages, let us stand and give a round of applause to our program challenge staff and our executive director that supports them as they come and accept the school spotlight for September's weekend. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's give him another look at all. Mr. Chair, that concludes our spotlight report for this evening, thank you so much.
Thank you. I do want to back up just a second and apologize to Hayden Duncan for calling him his dad's name, Brett, or tapping down the screen. But Hayden is a fifth grader at the road, so after Ms. Markville Cook leaves us in our prayer, Mr. Hayden Duncan is going to leave us in our pledge, and if you're looking at the screen, you'll see he's even accommodated having a flag in the background. So, Mr. Markville, if anyone would say.
Let us stand, please. I'm honored to be grateful for this day and all of many questions gathered. Father, thankful for the privilege of serving on this school and the opportunity of leading and teaching our self-respected future. We pray for us children of all the ages that we are facing. We pray for those that are dealing with difficulties of the pandemic. We pray for all those who are ill and have other issues of our facing. In the midst of all this sorrow, how much are we in a command to be counted, to know and know. And how is it going to be expression of the words of our mouths and the meditation of our hearts? Be acceptable over you, oh Lord, our strength and our need and love. In the midst of your need, what is such good for, amen.
Thank you, Joe, very much. We appreciate you joining us and doing that for us. All right, next time, we'll go into our school system announcements, Mr. Brown.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Young lady, it is safe to do the announcements tonight, it's going to send your picture, so you are starting with me for the announcements. Now to start, follow Monday, September seventh, will be a bigger day holiday. Wednesday through the thirtieth, it will be the Google Classroom One-on-One and the Power of Infinite Camp Versus Family Workshop, twelve PM until five PM. Tuesday, October sixth, support education meeting will meet at two sixteen South Sixth Street, Griffin, Georgia, and the GSCS Learning Center at six PM. October twelfth through October sixteenth, the Griffin Spark County school system will observe its fall break. Mr. Chair, quickly announce for that.
All right, thank you very much. Board members, I would now entertain a motion for the adoption of our agenda.
Mr. Chair, before we do a motion to adopt the agenda, I just noticed from looking through the action of the room, it seems like department heads and cabinet members are no longer recording the diversity of the different vendors who may go for different contracts. And so I just wanted to keep in mind that early on, we started recording the diversity of the different people coming out or wanting to bid for contracts. So I just wanted the superintendent to make a mental that we continue to report that, because it's good to see when we have people that represent the entire district that are receiving contracts. And so I would love to see those vendors and African-American participation, businesses, minorities, and veterans are included in that bidding process.
Okay, anything I may? I have a motion by Mr. Holmes. Second by Ms. McDonald. All in favor, signify, excuse me, any person, first and second? Oh, sorry, any person, second, okay. All in favor, signify by raising your pink card. Awesome, thank you. All right, we are now at our public comment section, and I know that I have three that I believe that are with us, and if there's more, you can let me know that. We thank you for being here and willing to give of your public comments. Let me read this, our guidelines for that. Any individual who desires to speak is requested to give it a name, and a group that they may be representing, the speaker should speak to the board and not to the audience. Presentation could be brief, informal, yet include audience may consider it important to the speaker. Unless at extensive time, it's granted the treatment until another seat, five minutes. If one spokesperson has presented on a matter and does not let others repeat all of the same ideas, others speaking are usually limited to one. If it has to do with the school reopening, we'd have been allowing this a little bit more first time with that, and they would make sure it is a point of purpose. Questions, suggestions, proposals, or criticisms which have been presented verbally shall also be submitted when factored in writing and should be signed by the individual or spokesperson of the group. And then a person hearing before the board or reminder to report information that the members of the board are without authority acting independently as individuals in official matters. But we will be listening and hearing each and all, we will be responding to your comments, but again, I want to thank you for being here to do that. The first person I have on my list that is here is Mr. Lee Cook.
We do. We call three thousand and two, Sarah Lane, with the word. I spoke a few times before. Pretty passionate about schools, kids, teachers. I have kids in the school district. One at future, one's already made it through school, and now I've got one in the private school. It's hard to me, when I watch these meetings. Most of y'all probably know I have a wife, I was a teacher at one. I watch these meetings, and I keep up with the going down of what's happening within the district. Spent twenty years in the green room. If you don't know anything about this, probably the worst box fight course ever created. And things are done in a particular way for a reason. So that way, you can win and win accordingly. And right now, this system has a serious problem. And it starts right there, a lot of people in this room. And I'll tell you, there's three board members sitting up here that I can tell you have been asking questions. They've been given comments, and they've been doing the right thing for the last few months. And every time they ask questions, every time they give you a comment, they either don't get a reply, they're not telling the truth, and it's almost like a dodge and get out the way. Because I can point out two specific lotters from last board meeting that was specifically told to this board, to every parent in the system that watches this. How long are the kids on their computers? I tell you, they're only six to seven hours a night, every day. My kid sits there from the time he logs on at seven forty-five, and he doesn't get off until two-thirty, three o'clock in the afternoon, and that's around the whole system. I talk to the parents, and I listen to them, and a district member stood right up here at this podium and straight up lied to the board member and every parent that's out there. Are clean as lotters in the schools? Yes. Absolute lotters. I can tell you that as a fact. You can't get it together. You can't. If you're gonna stand up here and you got a talent to do it, do it right. You got teachers that are pushed to the kill. Pushed to the kill. And you can't get it right. You cannot get it right. You sit down and you want to pat yourselves on the back, and not once have you thanked the teachers or told me what a good job they're doing from one of these meetings. Who's not doing the work? Everyone on the set of the talk last week ever once said, "Our teachers are doing a great job." Not one of them. You're about to step down, Mr. Smith. Get rid of the garbage and get somebody here that wants some work. Get rid of the garbage, somebody has to come in here and take it over. I'm not projecting myself. It's sorrow. These schools are real because the staff that works downtown can't get it right. They cannot get it right because they want to sit there and pat themselves on the back and talk about what they're doing. Well, I can tell you what to do. They're ruining the school system. That's what they're doing. They're stressing their teachers out, they're stressing their kids out. My kid gets off the computer in the afternoon, he can't stop blinking his eyes for the rest of the day, he's gonna close his eyes and go to sleep. It's too much. It is absolutely too much. Get it right.
Thank you, Mr. Coe. Next on our list, we have Mr. Fisher Johnson.
I want to start off by saying good evening to the board and other guests. I'm not going to be before you long because five minutes is definitely not a lot of time to talk about the health and wellness of our staff, health and wellness, I'm sorry, Patricia Johnson, Calhounville School, a reading teacher and on to department chair. Health and wellness and educa- educational equity throughout the district. This, this gentleman was correct when he said that we weren't ready. But you have to keep in mind that teachers were in the buildings two weeks prior to starting the school year with the students. I mentioned equity in terms of education because I know for a fact that my school, Calhounville Middle School, sometimes there's a cloud that hangs over that school, and I'm going to get there, this is my fourth year. It should not have been in, we should not have been in the school for two weeks with no hand sanitizer, no mask. But we were expected to report to the building. We knew since March that there was a pandemic. And so I have difficulty understanding how an organization that knew about this pandemic since March did not have the adequate supplies needed for teachers to return. I applied to, to work from home because of high risk factor. I wasn't going to because I felt that there were other staff that were at higher, at a higher risk than I am, but wouldn't have to be in the building for two weeks and realized that there was no hand sanitizer. And we didn't get hand sanitizer until I spoke to someone in central office, no, I came on my lunch break one day to speak to someone in central office. She called the head person. They didn't know when the hand sanitizer was delivered, so that's a systematic issue. That's a sys- something wrong with the system when there is no documentation when supplies are delivered to the school. So it's at that moment that I decided that I needed to, I want to protect myself, protect my family and other elderly members of my family from potentially contacting the virus. If we weren't prepared for virtual learning, I don't know where the faith is going to come from with our teachers and staff and parents that were going to be ready for moving into the, the school buildings. This is unprecedented times. So for a middle school, the only middle school that was on a traditional schedule up until, up through today, it, it does make any sense. What response was, what approach by our admin to central office, the schedule needs to look mirror what it looks like when they return to the building. Nothing mirrors the time that we're in now, so why not plan for the time we're in now? Moving on to health and wellness as it relates to our staff. Along with the unprecedented times of the pandemic, we have an unprecedented time in terms of social justice. And I think, I'm from the north, so I've, I've been living in the south for years, and I don't think that this issue is just isolated to the south. This is an issue that this district, and I may be wrong, has failed to address and equip ourselves once the students come back. My school is incorporating a cultural relevance and proficiency training, and I would suggest that be part of the environment, part of the training moving forward for all schools because it's not only affecting, we're not on an island here, it's affecting the whole world, the whole country. So my suggestion is that some type of cultural relevance and proficiency training happen within the schools, starting with the staff, because we can't teach children until we get ready. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Not exactly to the first thing, but to one, please, to one. All right, thank you.
Good evening. Good morning. Everyone is present.
Can you remove your hat? You're glad, you're okay with that?
Good evening. I'm Sean Luke, um, a Griffin resident, born, raised at the school for a year. I've been in this system since 1999. The elementary school before I went to the middle school, I'm now at Calhounville School. And yes, I was fed to the board and superintendent, but I stand here tonight and I ask that y'all hear what's being said, not just listen. You have to hear and understand what's going on. As the two previous persons called me, my colleague, this gentleman, he is correct. Real affectment you know all day and tomorrow. With teachers, it's from eight to 10 to four, except the third day, you have the lunch and you're still trying to do something. Because you, in between, you have meetings. So it's something in that, if I got a clock, what teacher doing every day of the day? So we're right, wow. But what I don't understand is, as I said in my letter, the expectation y'all have with children are just every day they get going, because people are not there when they do their chicken. Cause y'all say you have to take me two days, two classes, complete one assignment. What you want to do? You come Monday, you like how many students, you want to sign them. So everybody have a handle, the teachers' expectations are here. Being attendance is due on Monday. Y'all are going to have Monday to Sunday to do work, but then you want teachers to do attendance on Monday. Huh? When you class in? You have to remember, you go into every class to check and see who checked in on that check-in sheet that y'all made me, that we have to do. Then you have to go see who do a sign. That's too much for us. Four classes and first period, that's five classes. Last Monday, I had been used to a 505 and I clocked out. I had Miss Vale sitting alone in office room, but she waited because I said, "I'm not going to listen, I get home." Sitting here all day, well, I didn't leave up here. I had a number five to get on the phone, go by anything, do any school related work. Yesterday, I didn't get, so I had to take it home. It was time to clock. That's, that's, that's not fair to me. I have undermined the condition, but I chose to on the bill because I don't want to be yelled at for this issue, because that's what it is. And then when grades come out, because children aren't going to work, then it's going to be on the teacher, because your parents won't work that hard to y'all. I want to go to school, need teaching for my children, but then they're not doing their work. Again, how am I supposed to call, call me? You try to call my children, working. Then it's handed in. But then that's similar, I try to do a best similar, like, it's like y'all are really, y'all just don't want to teach. Because we are tired, it's not, it's just days that turn first, but we are tired. I have given my school on blood pressure, had to run blood pressure tests last year because they are going to teach. I have one of my team members today, she had to leave today because they are not, it is too much. Teachers are doing, y'all, y'all making us do so much, but then the children are doing nothing. Y'all did this since March. And you know, I signed the PPE on last Thursday, August 27th. I got a face shield, a mask, and sanitizer, but we been to the building since July the 27th. What I remember is the kids that come and be in the building, I'm not even teaching to be in the building. There's a wife sitting there, there's no wife, I on my own, does not have, but help me prepare myself. So when I go to the restroom, bathroom, and when I go to use the toilet, whatever, I have to take what I need to clean so that I can prepare myself with the issue that I have. And then on that, if any of the teachers that come, that come back, I hope that that is presented, that it is not going on that teachers do virtual and in-person at the same time. Now that is not possible. Because you cannot teach a group of kids, maybe you got a mobile here on, online, and you're trying to explain, that is not going, that shouldn't be your option. It should be the one or the other. Y'all are little teachers. You are. Like I told Dr. Sauce, Dr. Candy, and you mean asking that name, you get it? Y'all have to think about what y'allself and these teachers, teachers, what? Think about what we have to do every day. We are, we are working ourself with the word, trying to clean less than this stuff virtually. But it's like, the more we do, it don't matter, because we are tired. You have four, ten, four, ten, fifteen, ten people out of the building, our school is a gun squad. Cause everybody's tired. So y'all, please think about teachers. Think about these children. Monday needs to be a day, a teacher's work day, where teachers, kids are working verbally or something, and teacher can do this attendance thing that y'all want. Y'all know why y'all are going to give us that, y'all are inflexing about everything, and y'all are going to inflexing with teachers. Inflexing with the children, oh, they got, they mom got, they have something they were inflexing with, they have to, with the, y'all are going to inflex it. Y'all are killing us, and we not going to help, but, but we just have kids. We just need y'all to understand the work coming from.
Thank you. Is there any, anyone else that is present? Or, do we have anyone online?
No.
All right, board members, we will then move to our consent agendas. I would entertain a motion for a consent agenda utter. Two moves, Mr. Smith. I have a motion by Mr. Holmes. I have a second by Ms. Cook. All in favor of signifying by raising your pink card? Need it? All of it. You have a better? Okay. That will be four. One of the nine.
Mr. Chair, this is a conference agenda. I do not see the answer that we're supposed to get as the next of the reasons for, uh, classified election, certified election, and presidential contract retirement.
I believe that is correct.
I did not receive it.
I will be telling the people, I did not receive it.
It's a hard copy one, I have one on me, it's like a Bible question.
All right. So I like the copy.
Okay.
I was hoping any packet. All right, uh, we will then move into our actin' others. So, Mr. Smith, if you want to do the duty. And this is.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Seems like March 14th was a long time ago. The last time they had students, teachers, face-to-face in classrooms, and then COVID happens, kind of is called a very long, long, hard disruption. Systems have been undermaking various procedures, worked on processes to begin any spread of virus, and worked hard recently. As the 2021 school year approached, our dean has put together a certain plan to facilitate a mixture in person remote work opportunities. We begin the formal school year on August 17th in an all remote work environment. It is not been easy and, uh, perhaps not ideal. But I will say this, our teachers have shown an amazing ability to be creative and resilient in working in that environment. And we have all been in question for the work we have seen in the virtual classrooms, and the content we have to adapt from them. So I do appreciate it very much for our teachers, our staff, and members, because this is not the way they normally teach, but they have, they have to find a way to adapt. And I think they have worked very creatively and very hard to do so. At the, at the August 18th meeting, the board asked the staff to develop a plan that can literally reopen our school buildings to in-person learning along with a timeline to accomplish that. And the last two weeks, Dr. Kennedy and members of our task force have worked on such a plan, giving feedback from wide, wide under our school staff and across the, the district, including areas of students. And so tonight, Dr. Kennedy and others of the task force will present that plan that we feel meets the criteria for a safely open in-student, all of the paths for continuation and all of it.
Good evening, Mr. Smith and members of the board. As Mr. Smith has indicated, tonight we appear to talk about, uh, present information regarding transition to in-person learning while continuing with the remote learning option. Next slide. As we move into the presentation, I believe that it is important to note that we have a team to monitor data and onboard data, because we have discussed and developed plans for our Star School Task Force. While this includes continuing to monitor our community data, continuing to follow CDC guidelines, and Georgia Department of Public Health recommendations, to help mitigate the spread, and continuing to partner y'all with the Department of Public Health's administrative agencies. As we prepare to transition into in-person learning, we know that our main focus has to be on mitigating strategies for students and staff, which includes social distancing, minimizing exposure, face colors, cleaning and hygiene, monitoring for symptoms, and implementing COVID-nineteen response protocols. We will touch on each of these points during this presentation in various ways. Next slide. The GSAS Star School Task Force has identified a seven-week timeline for planning and set up purposes to transition to an in-person option while continuing to offer the remote learning option for our students and parents. The task force has discussed at length the amount of time it would take to make a smooth transition, as well as necessary steps and tasks that would have to be implemented over the course of that timeline. This includes a multitude of tasks that would have to be accomplished each week. And so at this time, we're going to take a look as to what those tasks are during the timeline. Next slide. Starting the seven weeks out, we will need to launch the GSAS Learning Model Selection Survey to all parents and guardians. And we're to identify the number of students who will choose the option of returning to in-person instruction or remaining with remote learning instructions. Parents and guardians will have ten days to complete the survey. Once they have identified either remote or in-person, we are asking the parents and students to commit, to remain in that option for the further length of the first semester. From there, we will have Communications and Partnerships Division will launch a communication video that only explains the in-person transition process and strategies that we have in place. We will take the skills assessments from the virtual environment data, and that will be distributed to principals, marketing resources. Teachers with a pool of accommodations and accounting may apply based on the training and circumstances. And principals will begin to work with administrative services to identify any additional materials that may be desired for completion of their school-level operations plans that they are currently working on with their school-level task force. The Special Education Department will develop a communication plan for the Special Education Reintegration Plan, which we will explain fully in details later during this presentation.
Dr. Kennedy, just one second.
Yes.
Being told that nobody online can hear what's going on, so can you check that out and come ask me quick?
Can we check again? Have we texted anyone?
All right, we'll allow you to begin, and then if we do, we'll see feedback if it.
Yeah, we have, I have several events. There's specific to come here.
All right, that's good. Thank you.
Next slide. At six weeks out, and they give our resources division with the team to work with each principal as she identifies their pool of remote learning teachers or in-person teachers utilizing several pieces of that. Principals and instructional technology will continue to deliver efficient learning to address teacher needs as identified by skill self-assessment for the virtual environment, and curriculum training on the determined instructional model building schedule. The curriculum department will review data to determine if there are any adjustments that need to be made to the units, the RCD units. And the Special Education Department will meet with special education teachers involving a briefing integration plan, implementation, and analyze the needs for any additional PPE for classes and collaboration with the administrative services division. Special education staff will initiate their contact to discuss the in-person option. Next slide. Five weeks out, our schools will have completed their school-level operations plans with their school-level task force. Schools and principals will make determinations regarding staff and work services based on the GSAS Learning Model Survey data. Training or determined instructional model will continue. Schools will balance out their classrooms to allow social distancing as much as possible based on the numbers that we receive. All students who have chosen to remain in remote learning will be identified as remote learning students in our indoor campus system. We will continue to see any adjustments, uh, that will need to be made to the RCD units. And our Special Education Department will create class lists and provide them to principals, Transportation Department, and Nutrition Department. Identified teachers will begin besting planning processes for the Special Education and Reintegration Plan. Next slide. Four weeks out, schools will continue to work with administrative services on materials as suffice. Schools will re-rod student, students, teacher, if unable to conduct in-person instruction due to medical complications. Based on survey data, the transportation meetings for all students will be updated in a registration form provided by the Transportation Department. Training or instructional model will continue. They will continue to work on the RCD units if needed. Then we have a plan for communicating that all work is finalized and submitted by students for grading conferences as face-to-face instruction begins, uh, when we develop. And plans will be made for sharing rates or students' progress for twenty teachers. The Special Education Department will conduct all group of our classrooms to ensure readiness for implementation of Special Education Reintegration Plan, and parents will be contacted to confirm attendance. Next slide. Three weeks out, we will have our district and school-level communications sent out to all stakeholders. Schools and classrooms will be set up to receive students, and Special Education Reintegration Plan will be implemented. Two weeks out, teachers will start claiming for receiving students. Build and walk news will be conducted by school and district administrations to make any final adjustments or changes if needed, and then one week out, final adjustments or changes will be made for the first day of in-person learning. These are all major items that will take place over the course of the seven-week period. Next slide. Here, we're going to delve into some of the plan and look at some specifics. When you put the top line first. Thank you. This is our GSAS Transition to In-Person or Remote Learning Plan. The task force has worked diligently, um, to meet the sub-meetings as well as meeting as a task force worked numerous times over the last month to make pertinent decisions that were needed to update the plan that was originally, uh, identified as option one by back and change or reopen the schools. You just wrote down, uh, starting with, you can see the table of contents. Uh, and you will see those items listed here, including a list of the task forces and subcommittee members, the transition plan in in-person mode, COVID response transition plans by school, remote learning model, combined components of both, and then frequently asked questions. And we can move to page seven. Here, you will just find a brief background for the work of the task force that you will see there, and then also move to the seven-week timeline that we already reviewed. Uh, I do want to note that in-person planning will have to be more flexible because there will be times depending on the COVID status that are charged within the school community that we will need to flex in and out of in-person learning and remote learning if needed to mitigate any possible spread. Uh, at this time, I will go through this topic, uh, a few specific topics, uh, starting with staffing on page ten. This is our Human Resources Divisional Work Council with principals as they, as they make decisions and determinations about the most effective staffing for their individual abilities. I did want to put man here, Shanika Freeman, who's our teacher representative, on a task force. She's also our teacher over here. Uh, Ms. Freeman was asked to, uh, lead a twenty-four teacher staffing committee to discuss staffing options, uh, because we wanted to gather feedback directly from teachers around what staffing, possible staffing options could look like. And then looking at that input, and she did a great job, and then brought that information back to the task force, and, uh, that discussion actually led to this decision around staffing, uh, which is that it would be the flexible, uh, situation, that they have teachers who will be teaching remote learning as well as in-person, because we have some singleton classes on different individuals and specific certifications. There may be teachers who will be designated as a remote learning teacher only or an in-person teacher only. And there may be teachers who are teaching either remote learning or in-person based on segments. And, uh, that was some input that was gathered from the high school, um, area specifically. So you can see that the staff will have flexibility to allow principals to work through making those decisions along with support, uh, and working with the teachers and support from the Human Resources Division as they identify the best staffing for their individual schools. Well, twenty pages eleven and twenty, you will find detailed information regarding curriculum, rating, along with specified programs to include Special Education, ESOL, youth services, pre-k, new enrollment, CTAD, MTSAs, academic regular activities, and all our school programs. So here you will find all of the specifics as it relates to in-person, uh, learning as to how those areas will be operated. On page twenty. You just wrote down, that's sort of a Friday thing. On page twenty, page twenty-one, there is specific information allowing for monitoring behavior to reduce the spread as well as maintaining a healthy environment. Here's where you will find staff and student training videos and information for educational purposes around COVID-nineteen. And specific safety protocols for schools, Nutrition Department, Transportation, and visitors. I do want to take along to point out these specifics starting on page twenty-one. These guidelines are based on CDC and the Georgia Public Health, uh, Department. We have also, uh, they have a cleaning and sanitizing plan, uh, that you will hear from Mr. Agnes , uh, later in the presentation. I do just want to touch quickly on page twenty-one. Some of the specifics around maintaining a healthy environment. And so, of course, uh, that like, uh, four modes, we want to encourage students to stay home when safe where they do not feel well. Providing sanitizer on buses and in classrooms. Provide sanitizer stations at multiple entry points in school's locations. Providing cups for drinking water, supplying gallons of water in cups at classrooms that do not have sinks. Eliminate filters for the first semester, and we will reassess those as we go toward second semester. Providing appropriate PPE and equipment to all personnel. All students and staff shall wear face masks over in, in common areas and in classrooms where visiting cannot be, when assistive visiting cannot be entertained. Students and staffers that bring their own face covering masks, or one will be provided for them. Residents and common areas will be disinfectant and frequent. We will identify the visitors to school facilities. We are turning off common door transitions. Uh, we will make sure that there's, uh, circulation of fresh air into the building. We provide signage, monitors, face covers, masks, face shields, gloves, sanitizing chemicals, spray bottles, disinfectant wipes, hand sanitizer, anti-materiary bombing, can stove. Frequent sanitation of classrooms and provide teachers or staff with sanitizer spray that they can use if they choose throughout the day. But we are asking everyone to just spray now, uh, the young people might want to spray their, uh, area as they're leaving for the day. Having disneyed staff concentrate on hot areas and residents multiple times throughout the school day. We have a protocol to isolate, clean, and sanitize impacted classroom spaces, and supply capable materials for schools to make their own additional specific school, uh, signage as they need to. In nutrition, uh, we will be providing meals into go-to containers for all students to get meals. Students will come to the serving line in the cafeteria. Nutrition, we are also encouraging parents to utilize our payment plus , uh, so that we can minimize this chunky of funds and money, uh, at a point of sale. And we will not have our card sales for students and staff to limit the arrangement by using money at the cashier terminal in order to put down a check at time for students and staff at the terminal. For transportation, our bus drivers and students will wear face covers or masks on the bus. Buses will be cleaned and disinfectant daily. And we will ask parents and refurbished parents to transport your students in that way to help us minimize or reduce the number of students on the bus. But bus loads will not be adjusted for social distancing. For visitors, procedures, we will limit visitors. Visitors will be about hundred only. We also would like to minimize others in the classroom, which will mean no classroom volunteers will be allowed, and this will be reassessed throughout the school year. Parents will be asked to remain in cars during morning drop-off or pickup. Temperature checks for all visitors, vendors. Uh, required face covers, masks for all visitors. And maintenance, and our nutrition visitors will be checked again, uh, in the front office and nutrition vendors, uh, with the cafeteria manager. Then you will note that we do have, on page twenty-two through twenty-four, information, uh, provided regarding health screening, health protocols, and our COVID-nineteen response. All students and staff will complete temperature screenings. There is an item on tonight's agenda that Mr. Agnes will bring forth to support the temperature screening process. Students have identified isolation rooms that will be utilized for individuals showing symptoms. And we have established staff and student COVID response protocols as well. And Mr. Agnes will be speaking in reference to the student. And Mr. Agnes will be speaking in reference to the student response protocol shortly. On page twenty-five. You will see guidance. Providing to schools as their starting school task force teams develop their school evaluation plans. When those plans are completed. Can you just scroll down please? When those plans are completed, the individual school's school plans will be linked into this document in this section. And so that's where that table, or that table is there, we will link those plans into this particular area. Now, page twenty-seven, which is right here, you see our remote learning models start. And individuals are commended with remote learning business, our current conversation of remote learning process and procedures. And then once you move to the ending of this section on page thirty-six. You will find the frequent ask questions. For, uh, in-person and remote learning, uh, this document is also linked in the presentation as well as attached to this document. The LAQ document provides questions and responses regarding in-person and remote learning. Safety and sanitizer questions, school transportation questions, health protocol and screening questions, special programs questions, and staff questions are included in the LAQ. I do want to bring your attention to the statements at the bottom of page forty-seven, which is the very last page. Which, uh, simply states that we will, uh, continue to look at our instructional model models as we move forward as they are subject to change depending on resulting county's transmission data. The Joint Department of Public Health guidance, CDC guidance, voters' executive orders. Our guidance that we receive from Joint Department of Education. Guidance from our local, uh, our district court health department and local emergency management guidance. There may be times in the district's schools when in and out of in-person learning and remote learning models depending upon the status of COVID-19 data in the district and the school community. If we can go back to the presentation slides. At this time, I'm going to ask Anthony Agnes to come forward, our state government of administrative services. And he will be reviewing the cleaning and sanitizer plan and student code and maintain response protocol.
Good evening, more members. I do want to just touch again that we discussed a lot of the cleaning plan in the last work session. A lot of that has not changed. You still have the same concept that we're talking about, the daily clean, the weekly cleans, the monthly cleans, and those sorts of things. As far as the increased cleaning during the COVID-19, I did want to update you on a couple of things there. We talked about the allotment and the number of staff members that we have. We are now at eighty-five of eighty-seven, so we are two short of being fully staffed. But we also discussed utilizing our transportation department and some people that were interested in helping us there. We had twenty of the drivers that had actually said that they were interested. We set those up to go through our training program. As of today, we have eleven of the twenty that have signed up that have gone through and completed. We assigned four of those that finished over the weekend, uh, to schools on Monday. And we sent those to the schools that were short, uh, on the allotment. So they have, uh, reported there. We had seven more that finished Monday and Tuesday. So they will be assigned tomorrow to go out to, to schools that we are working. Uh, and I believe before I walked in, they took in one more that was one month away from finishing. So now we give us the twelve out of twenty. We have some others that since we had started this are coming forward to Mr. Harris. And we're saying that they would like to also be a part of this and we are in the process of setting them up to also do, uh, the cleaning. The machines that we talked about, the nipples came in, have all been assigned to schools. They all have them. Custodians have been trained on them. They are working with them and spraying, uh, the large areas, hallways, the common areas, gymnasium, the stewardess troops going back through, uh, doing a san- sanitizing of the building, uh, at that point. We will also go back through to resanitize all classrooms. Just can't do that during the day with, uh, teachers there. But we will be going back and then working on that as well. We had the full training that we talked about before, all custodians. We gave them the clean stairs that we have and are working with them to make sure that that is happening. We're working on the area too with schools, uh, on their individual plans of lunches where they will have lunch. Some they still be able to use some in the cafeteria, but we're also doing classroom. We're encouraging them to be outside in courtyards, utilizing the large spaces that they have for lunch. So the students aren't confined into classrooms for, uh, all day. You're just going to have to get in, lunch and go to bed. So, um, we, I've been working hard since then. We've also continued with spraying, sanitizing bottles, the quad, living quad, med quad. And we are utilizing all teachers to issue these bottles. Uh, and when they return, uh, to carry over from what we had talked about. Uh, when we closed in the two weeks in anticipation of returning back in March. So all of that is still going on as well. So we have, um, and I want to say this for the record. I know that we have had comments of, of teachers still having to clean the rooms. Mr. Holmes, I'm not aware of any of those. I've asked for teachers to, uh, talk to administrators or administrators to, to tell me specifically buildings that it's happening in, rooms that it's happening in, the types of things they're telling me they're having to do. I'm not going to take and tell you that they might not have had to, or they may have not done something at some point in time. I'm not aware and I, I need to be aware of specifics so that I can address those, uh, just common statements. Uh, I, I can't address those in a general, general setting. So I would just ask that if someone does mention that, please have them talk to the administrator, talk to the custodian that they're working with. Um, you know, I, I'm open to them contacting me as well. I, I just want to be able to handle and make sure that everyone is comfortable with what we're doing.
Question, uh, what happens to the cleaning bins at schools?
That depends on which school and the custodians are responsible.
I may have, just going through the list, and I have about ten right now of teachers that have sent messages. And that they're cleaning their own classrooms, that there's still no sanitizer stations, the bins are not cleaned, the air isn't working half of the rooms. Uh, they allow anyone to come in the building and it stays, it will be limited, visitors will definitely, that hasn't been faced. Here's a picture of a bin in my classroom. Here's a picture of the bin in the bathroom. Uh, so I, and I know I've expressed the concerns of teachers. I've sat here in these meetings and expressed the concerns of teachers. So to say that you're not aware. I don't understand what you're saying.
What I'm telling you is I'm not aware of teachers cleaning their own room. Are there areas in buildings that need to be cleaned? Absolutely. I've been making walk-throughs to dress them. Uh, and when you say, when you say air is not working in half the rooms. All right. What's the one we're talking about? What room are we talking about?
I said that to you yesterday and I, it's from that same school, Mr. Agnes. The teacher just sent that at four twenty-two PM. So I mean, you can say that you're having a feeling with it.
A teacher sent you something at four twenty-two AM?
Yes, sir.
Four PM?
PM, right.
It says what?
I haven't, I just went over it. No, I'm going to send it to you again, but I thought yesterday and saying that to you, your message that you got from me was very detailed, which I greatly appreciate. But it was happened, but then to hear it again today is totally opposite of what you told me it was.
Hearing that the air does not work or the cleaning. The one we talked about yesterday is the air did not work.
Hasn't worked.
Absolutely. And I gave you that detail in, but maybe this was back out there and continued on that today. I checked before we came in and it has been completed.
Is that the same thing that you gave me in the test? Uh, no, this is a different one. Uh, this is just saying that, like I said, four twenty-two today, that was a message that was sent to me from that same school.
Yeah, another concern is not working?
Yeah, and, um, the response was, I had even after concerns I started asking about the air that's working in the school when maintenance came to the building, the teacher asked if they were, they wanted to fix the air. And they said, no. You can put in a work order. The teacher replied, I put in the work order on Monday. They said, well, keep calling and we send the work order. Several teachers have been complaining about having headaches. Did they leave at the end of the day? Or chest pain, or tense week, return back to school while we have to clean our classrooms? And so why does school has not been properly cleaning the vents in the classrooms that have excessive amount of dust? Vents were only wiped out and not cleaned. So. I'm just at a loss of words because we all want our kids to go back to school. But in these conditions, I mean, this presentation is nice, it's good. But when people are reaching out and having these concerns, we just have to get them addressed. I don't know what we need to do to address them, but we have to address them with the penalty. We have to address them and not just say that they're complaining, but really take their concerns seriously.
I've never stood here and told you that they were just complaining.
Okay.
And if you're giving me that.
Oh, y'all can't talk at the same time.
When you sent that to me yesterday, I checked into it and they were working on it. It has been fixed. You're telling me about another, I'm not aware of it until you send it to me.
Right.
Once I'm aware of it, I will deal specifically with it and that's my statement. I can't deal in generalization. I need to know specifics. If I get a statement, half the rooms in the system's air won't work. I can't deal with it. I, I can't deal. And you know what else I've done that sometimes there are hyperbole. But I'm dealing with whatever specifically I'm aware of. And I will make sure that our maintenance departments deal specifically with what I'm aware of. But I can't, I can't deal with generalizations.
And like I said, I appreciate whatever I reach out to you, but you always give me detailed response. And I appreciate that. It's not as though it'll be down, it's looking to, took care of it. You also provided detailed instructions. I appreciate that. And with the team capacity I want to is just that, I know you dealt with that yesterday, but before twenty-two today, I would see another one. Same tool, same issue. So I thought maybe if we took care of the one classroom, I was not checking all of us.
We check and we monitor the rooms. Unless we get something specific, we don't know. I mean, we can monitor, we, we can see that if a room is running hot. And we send someone to check those. We send especially if it's running hot or not getting anything, something taking, they go, room is hot. Uh, a lot of times when we find that case is there's a lamp sitting on the thermostat that has temperature run up so that the air runs twenty-four or seventy. And, and we can't have that either because that damages the equipment. But if we give a staff or a work order from a school, we send laborers to check those work orders. Now, I can also tell you that if we get a work order at twelve o'clock today, that it will be fixed by four o'clock every night. So, but what I'm telling you is if I know specifics, now maybe this part was no specifics. We will go out and deal with those specifics, but I can't deal in general of, of my room is always hot or things. There's a lot of different things that can cause that. Uh, humidity after tomorrow, there will be some areas that will be warmer tomorrow because of the humidity after this rain. And we work with those kind of things as well. Some of those we just, it's something we happen to deal with. Um, but again, I, I just go back to the specifics. If I have specifics from a school or from a teacher, we, we will deal with those specifics. But I can't, I can't deal with generalities.
And I will continue sending as I get them, like I said from the beginning.
I understand what I said.
That you said it's taken care of early and gave me a deep explanation. However, the same thing was brought from a different teacher. So I thought maybe that would've been a question in the entire building. Hey, teachers, whose room are, are becoming hot or whatever question may be. So that if the person was already over there, they can go in and check it. I understand the work order has to be put in and all that, but it's, uh, but if a person's already over there, why can't it be checked for it? Or ask for every teacher to give, give that was the problem. Um, and it looks like in the explanation that you gave me, that it was a problem, but it was a particular. So you trying, now both are trying to talk at the same time. Let me say what you had to say.
The problem yesterday was a truck.
Mm-hmm.
It was the one today inside the building.
Inside the building, yes.
It was a good definition.
But it's still on the grounds of the school. We.
It is, but we've got all this work that we're trying to get. So we make those specifics. And we'll deal with that when we have that.
All right, so I'm going to send it to you when you check, when you check on it tomorrow and make sure these teachers' rooms come.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
That's what I like to know. We're talking about cleaning rooms. The only thing I'm aware of, these teachers and administrators are cleaning, was they were spraying, uh, they spread out the surface. That's what they did for it. That's correct. It's all we have.
How about you ask the teacher right now?
Are they running using burns? What do they do?
How about you ask the teacher right now?
Do you have to clean your room?
I, I did not at work job. I'm already setting up the room and, um, if we're vacuuming the room using the table, I was writing the table. I would say it'd be also.
Mr. Johnson, you play there a little bit?
I left the first season back at school. My floor was shiny, but the room was not clean. The same day, I approached that the same one away. And I left in March, was still painting on that same wet right behind my desk in August. The first two weeks I had to sweep my floor every day because we were short custodian. And I don't know why that wasn't known, that we were short a custodian in August when we had questionable attendance in March. So I'm just seeing for power and use, but that's part of that commitment, meditation, I'm not sure.
That's, that's.
Let's hear it, let's hear it. Um. My friends, they cool every day. You know, two of them probably just try to do this thing. But friends will be cool every day. Yesterday, my floor got knocked. This is the first time I've been knocked since I've been here. Um, the first week, um, she'd come in and spray and wipe it down. Doors and door handles are, are clean, um, every day. But yes, she had to ask for a room so I can see because I have, I have some, I have some. But yes, she had to ask for a room so I can see, because I have, I have some, I have some. It is, it's nobody there, but you know, she do do the, like the door handles at the door. And I, I don't wanna be obvious, but she asked me, did she mop it? I'm sure, but he, he said, I have some. So, does that have room to sleep up? So.
Well, how about this? How about after the day, how about we send a message to teachers and ask them what type of cleaner they're, they're outside of the room? Because I don't know if you think lying to me. I'm sure the teachers that are reaching out to me, that are reaching out to Ms. McDonald or any other board member, they're not lying to us. So maybe we need to do what we need to do, get the people we need to get with, and we're sort of sending them forward, so that we can see what it means our, who's not cleaning, who is, so that we can address those issues. Because I know for a fact that teachers are cleaned early.
Okay.
So, and that's that, I'm done.
Okay, continue with the. Okay. Um, I, I was wrapping up on the cleaning, we were sure there, um, to, to ask any questions. Um, we've had a discussion a little bit, and I just wanted to see if there were any other.
Any additional questions for me?
Mr. Aiken, is Calum Road Middle staffed appropriately for custodial help?
I'm sorry?
It's Calum Road Middle staffed appropriately for custodial help?
That's one of the schools that was short in custodial, and we've sent two, uh, no, we sent one of the transportation workers out to begin helping there yesterday.
So there, there's been an update, my list that you gave us, we just looked ago, with the numbers of custodians, there's kind of updates to that list?
Yeah.
That was in the, in Bruce's report that I had to leave.
So, what I wanna know is what else is needed, what does custodial need in order to thoroughly, fully, to complete their job?
What do they need thoroughly, fully, to complete their job? I'm, I'm wanting to make a statement here, because it seems we have one school that is.
It's more than one school. They're considered top, the top of it. It's more than one school, I'm saying.
And again, I'm spread. If I have specifics, I can order fully answer that question.
So, how about tomorrow, we send out a server of communicating to you with the schools, so that you can not get generalization, so that you can get specifics. Can we do that, or I can go through and uh, look at my emails and look at other text messages and my Facebook messages, and I can send those to you as well.
I've been more than happy to send out those, but I, I've sent out to building administrators to ask them to speak with their teachers to see if there's anything specific, because they handle their buildings. Uh, and I've asked that. I, I've gotten nothing as of now, this last week. I've gotten nothing where anyone has sent me anything, uh, to be addressed. I'm more than happy to send all teachers in just.
So now, we know the destination, whether it's one school, two schools, three schools, or all eleven, twelve, thirteen, to whatever text might be. After we know the destination, can we address it, so that it's not, it's not no longer an issue?
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Aiken.
Can I ask Mr. Aiken a call, oh, I'm sorry, that was. No, I, I, I just, I've been raising a pink heart. Mr. Aiken, um, it's for staffing, I, I, and I know it makes a difference in, in their work time and, or the days that they're there. Um, is everybody have like full-time people that are there to clean up after the teacher leaves? Is the case right now? Uh, how, how that set up? Is everybody that, uh, so, are they, are they, are they there, and are they able to clean up after everyone leaves? Because I know there are some people that work after, um, you know, everybody leaves the building.
Yes.
How, how is that?
Everyone that is part of that allotment is, is full-time. There are no part-time custodial staff. Uh, we allow principals and building to work set times, because some of them have different programs that go longer than others. So we allow them to work their custodial staff to set the times, to have someone there before everyone gets there, have someone there after, uh, everyone leaves, uh, if that's their desire. We have even, in the case of Calum Road School, offered with the custodial staff, um, any of them that would like to get additional time, uh, we would be more than happy to work with them to, to get overtime. Um, so we, we're working with the custodial staff to make sure that we're covered, uh, even if there's a short fall, and we have, of the ones that were short, it was two high, before it was two high schools and then one missive. Uh, the high schools have, I think eleven is Spalding High, um, and then Griffin, I believe that's thirteen, uh, because it's a little bit larger. So we, we have worked to fill the ones with, that had the, I don't know, I wanna say biggest need, but biggest impact. Uh, so we have, we have worked with that, but we have all of the full-time, we have no part-time, and we are, we allow the principals to work with their staff, uh, as far as time.
What am I supposed to read?
No, you go ahead.
Okay.
You got, you got it, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Mr. Aiken, so let's say we have three transportation employees that come over to help Calum Road, Mitten, for example. Or do they have to quit at a certain time? Based on how we pay them? Or can they go finish their work, whether it takes their thirty minutes over, forty minutes over?
We cut the discussion with them. If, if, if they stay over for cleaning, we, we will allow that. We just need to discuss what, what we're gonna be doing and how we're gonna be doing it, but the only thing we are, um, working around right now is on Tuesday and Thursday, when all the transportation are out distributing meals. Uh, if they come in earlier today.
Yes, we've come in now.
Aiken, I make it, I, I, and they do it as well, that's what I'm trying to say. I need to know, I need to know. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, so go ahead.
Um, the only thing we have is they have to fit, or have to stop by, I think right now it's like two o'clock in order to get to their bus, to get to the, um, schools to deliver, uh, to deliver meals.
Okay, so if we go in person at some point, and we will, will, and I've just got some running through my head right now that I was exploring, however, I think all of you in this room know that this board, and all of the teachers and the parents that are here to know, that the clean of these buildings is probably a very top priority. And it will continue to be my top priority, other than taking care of our teachers, and it's pretty obvious. So if this occurs once we get back in school and we still need help from nutrition and/or bus drivers with cleaning our buildings, will they go out to work and you might have to pay them overtime? That's the question.
Yes.
The answer is yes. The problem we've had all along is we have this custodial allotment out there. We've had a problem maintaining a full staff.
Correct.
Because the eighty-five we've got now are not the same eighty-five we had last week.
Correct.
We have a shortage of that in the same place it was last week. We've worked very hard, we took the two agencies, to all men and staff, because we are not able to hire enough in direct. We're working with bus drivers now, who, who want to spend the time to be able to work during this time, the driver's not everything. We understand that we would go back with this through option, they're driving morning, afternoon. There's gonna be a limitation to do the middle day or afterwards to get this done. That's part of our scheduling, that's part of the scheduling challenge that we have. We want this to work, and we know we have to go to those limits to make it work. So if we still got issues, I feel we'd be glad to do the survey that we talked about to see who's being asked to do what. We've talked to principals about what do they need, they don't have. We've made allowances, allotments, deliveries on those things. We've been checking closets and found things that were delivered or were put out of the way. To make sure that all of those things are backed out where it's supposed to be, we changed out the types of supplies. There's some like, or some do not like, that prefer different things. We try to build accommodations. And that's what we're still doing. We know we got that during this next seven weeks, if you, well, while this plan to move forward, which hopes for the October return. That scheduling is definitely how we're gonna have to do, and we know that's gonna be happening.
Well, I, I'll be quite honest with you and, and everyone in this room, when, when, when Ms. Doots and Ms. Johnson say that they haven't gotten anything that they were supposed to get, I kind of have reservations, and I know why they don't have the stuff they were told they would get, they would get.
That's the same thing that was asked a long time ago. They said, oh, every school's got it. I know, I sent a checklist. Oh, they got it, they got it, they got it. When I did got a message, they said they didn't have it. So.
I mean, I'm not placing blame on anyone, I'm just trying to understand how this continues, it's to be a, I just don't get it.
And if you don't understand that you don't know. That's, if you don't know, if it's been done properly, just say that you don't know that you look into it. Don't be so sure that it's been done, and it's not, when people are reaching out with board members, saying that these things have not been done. Just tell the truth. And I'm not, not saying that to honor any, wait me soon, but I'm calling you a lot. What I'm saying is just tell us the truth, so that we know that it's been done. I can always say, you know what, I'll look into it, I'll check into it, but then when you tell them it's been done, and I tell them that it's been done, it's like, so you don't believe me? So if, if you're not sure about it, just say that you don't know. Like when I asked about the hand sanitizer being delivered, he said delivered a week ago, but that wasn't the case. Hand sanitizer was still sitting at whatever shop it was. And I, so just tell the truth. If you're not aware of it, say that you're not aware of it, but you'll look into it. Don't tell me that it's been done. Don't tell my colleagues that it's been done, and it has not been done, because we get a different report. That's all I'm saying. And I want to make sure that we do everything in a swift and smooth way, so that when it's time to vote to reopen these schools, we can reopen these schools, and our children, and our teachers, and our families will be safe. That's it. You don't know, say no, no.
Alright. Like I said, dude, I've never stood here and gone to, uh, any.
I've seen it a lot. So I don't wanna call you a lot, that's what I say, I'm very clear what I say.
That's what I'm saying.
I'm talking, don't be out.
But you're getting up, hold it, it's like that.
Y'all are trying to talk, I'm saying. But I'm not, and that's the thing, I always appreciate you, Mr. Aiken, in providing detail into everything that I've ever asked you about. And if that's all I can take away from your work, because that's what you've done. But just note that our teachers, oh, geez, sorry, very sorry. Uh, just letting you know that our teachers that have concerns about their rooms not being cleaned, I've just got five messages to send up here right now. So let us do the survey. Teachers, be honest in your survey. Let us do the survey, so that we can see what they are, whether or not being cleaned, and how they feel, so we can fix it and move on.
Mr. Brown, do you know that a little bit of their initiative?
Um, I always say go to our ministry, they tell me they follow the command. So if they say that they are, they are. I try to look at the bus, but maybe there's something else that, that simple office can do on a great scale, so that things are taken care of.
Not fully cleared, but they have. So I did want to address now, uh, student phone calls. We did speak about this at a previous board meeting, where I showed you, actually it was a flow chart at that time, and it had very color system, so I changed the format here. Information is basically still the same, but it had been updated. Uh, you want you to know, I've been working closely with our local health department, as well as our district four, and the state department of health. Anytime before I put something in our plan, it is approved by the department of public health before it goes in here. So one thing I've done, as I said, changed format here, just to be easier to read, easier to follow. What happens when there's a COVID nineteen diagnosis, it gives you all this, that we are working with the Georgia Department of Health to work this as well, as our local department, I've stated this. Uh, if you scroll down just a little bit there, you'll see the definition that we were given by them in the CDC for exposure. It has been updated, because at one time it was being within six feet for fifteen minutes without a mask. They've changed that to within or without a mask, so that has, has been updated there. The thing that they've also added was being in contact with restrictions for sick person. Living in a household with a confirmed person with COVID nineteen, carry for sick person. So those are all the things that are listed by the CDC and the health department as being exposure, or what they're termed now as close contact. Uh, they've gone away from the term exposure, and they've defined it as close contact. So when I talk about one of those students experiencing symptoms, you have symptoms under there. As you can see, that overlapped a lot of different, uh, sicknesses, especially flu, maybe in upper respiratory. So we're still treating those as though they have symptoms of COVID nineteen, and we're addressing those as we go. So scroll down a little further. There, here are the three things that we talked about before. Three areas, if a student is home and starts having symptoms, we're asking them to stay home, contact us, seek healthcare, uh, the healthcare provider, and then give us the report from the healthcare provider as to what they feel their diagnosis is. Uh, the student is out of the school, we're isolating at that point in time, calling parents, uh, sitting at home, and then we're looking, uh, to find the diagnosis there, so we're requesting that they seek healthcare. If we determine that they've been within the school, uh, within forty-eight hours, uh, if there's been no contact, as though we're talking there, uh, they were at the school, we've never made it anywhere in the past, uh, we will consider, um, those forty-eight hours, no contact, and we will continue. If it's yes, then we identify the students who meet the close contact criteria that we set a moment ago. Contact the parent guardians of those students, uh, attend them home until the diagnosis is determined. In either case, siblings would be to go home as part of that definition of being in a home with someone that has that illness. Scroll a little bit. Alright, criteria there, if student has a negative diagnosis, student with the symptoms, that was the the diagnosis, may return at least twenty-four hours after symptom system, symptom improvement, uh, no fever without the use of fever reducing medications. Students who were identified in close contact and symptomatic student, may return the day after they receive a negative diagnosis, as long as they are not exhibiting symptoms of steps. Siblings, uh, may also return the day after diagnosis, again, if they're not symptomatic. If a student is positive, student must remain quarantined for at least fourteen days from the system onset. Uh, once the quarantine day, quarantine collapses, student can return after the twenty-four hour period, symptom of improvement, no fever, without the use of fever reducing medications, and at least return by healthcare provider. Students who were identified in close contact with that symptomatic student, may return after at least ten days have passed from the onset of symptoms of that student, and also are not exhibiting any symptoms on their own. Siblings of the symptomatic student will have to remain in quarantine at home, with their sibling, uh, through the fourteen day period, and, um, may return after that, if they are not exhibiting any symptoms on their own. So the notes I've had there, sometimes we get a negative diagnosis, the student, the healthcare provider may say that the student still needs to remain at home for seven days. for seven days and we follow those, uh, directions of that student. And then we'll continue there. Multiple students in the same class exhibit symptoms, at that point in time, we would look at sending the entire class home, uh, until the diagnosis is obtained. Students who were sent home while waiting, we allow them to complete work distance learning. And at any time if we reach fifty percent of students being sent home, not students diagnosed, uh, we'll close the school for seventy-two hours. Do the first twenty-four just to isolate the school and then take the next forty-eight hours to bring it sanitized. And then we'll perform our allowance students. So that is the updated student protocol.
Brian, what about the teacher profile?
Uh, that, Ms. Dobbins, uh, that's part of...
Oh, that's her presentation.
Yeah. But it correlates with, with the student data? No.
Well, if she's... Can I ask her a question? Cards.
Yes, here's a link to, and we can show it in his house on Facebook. What is that called?
So, we're not, one second. Can we turn it on just if we're not... Okay. So this came from two different employees within the division. Quick summary. Until four thirty PM so far, HR department was not allowing people to tell any if they have tested, if they tested positive COVID-19. We have been so busy that it's something that I haven't looked into until recently when my coworker was a teacher like myself, who goes to several occasions and makes contact with at least forty people and even parents and kids had a family member who that's positive. The staff member at HR said because that the employee had a basement and two air units, she would be fined. Mind you, this employee, and she gave the employee's card. To me, that's like calling the hospital and telling you have chest pains and they say, "Oh, take it at me, you'll be fined." Don't plot thickets, trust me. Let's just say my kids would not be returned to GSCS and it's not because of COVID-19. So with this, that I just got this quick summary and about reporting COVID-19, how are we ensuring our teachers? And yes, we did take the extra step to report weekly the COVID cases or like there or whatever. So we greatly appreciate that. So how can we know that HR is going to completely address these issues and not tell somebody that you've got a basement and an air unit, so you'll be fined? Just come on work.
I would like to speak with you after this meeting because I'm sorry that is not accurate.
So you're aware of this?
No, I'm not, but that is not something that anybody in my department would say. So I would be glad to meet with you.
So, like he said, it's...
We have a protocol that we follow.
It's set aside for... Mr. Chair, but instead of saying, "I am not aware," you can't get up here and say that that didn't happen. So give, the business job that we can look into it. Don't get up here and say that it didn't happen because you went there when it was said you went on the phone.
I'm sorry, but you know, um, in this meeting, I felt like all that has happened this entire evening is accused, accused, accused. And everybody in here is working very diligently to do the right thing.
And I'm glad that we all are working hard to do it. However, I have questions and concerns that you can bring to me and that's all I can do for your attention. Thank you, Ms. Dobbins.
We have consistently used the same protocol when people have identified themselves as having symptoms of COVID. They've been screened, they've been asked to go home. We've used a, a contact tracing piece that we can do here. Report that to the health department, we have positive cases, they're sent home, we use the contact tracing here, the health department handling more of them. But we can't tell people that their colleague has tested positive COVID. We can't tell them that. We can't tell those who we end up telling, "You may have been exposed and you need to go home." We can't tell them, "You may have exposed because of the requirements." But they have done that consistently. Or I'm not aware of cases where it wasn't. If you'd like to bring one to my attention, I'll be glad to look at it. But I'm not aware of that. I know we've had many of these. Because those members have had to come from, right now we have been having very, very much lower than others. Of those who have still got active cases, because they come on and come off of those lists. But we've worked very hard to work with the health department, all those protocols.
Mr. Brown, is there a reason that you have brought up that it goes with them?
No, it was just an answer, uh, today's way.
So two days ago, you got this answer and we know one about it.
And I followed a call with that person today, a couple of them, as I scheduled a call with them before bringing it to your attention. And I bring it to your attention.
But they should have brought our attention to direct that this is what we're giving. They're not following the training.
Mr. Smith, we know that that's not happening. And we've talked about this time after time. What we can do is assist them so that people will follow the technical man. And as I told that employee, this is something that you need to go to your principal about or you need to make an appointment with Ms. Dobbins or Ms. Aiken so that you can talk about this issue. But everybody, again, is so scared to do that. And I am going to do my due diligence and bring these issues to everybody's attention. You can't fault me for it. I'm going to bring it to your attention.
That'll might have been brought to our attention. It's got to be a change where people feel so empowered. Just go right past it, but right past the office and go straight to your rooms.
All right, so that's good. And we've been dealing with that since March. And what has, what have you done to superintend and single out that?
We've...
Yeah, go ahead.
We've responded to those issues, got them brought to our attention.
Right, but what are we doing as a doctor, such a pod, you know? I'm really looking forward to reading this book that Mr. Pugh gave me, How to Code Your Kingdom. And I think maybe our schools need to get to better from that as well. So like I said, we brought it to your attention. We know that teachers, employees feel uncomfortable going to their administrators. They feel uncomfortable reaching out to the central office staff. But they do feel comfortable reaching out to board members who they feel are standing up and looking out for them. I'm sorry that they're coming. Well, I'm not sorry that they're coming to me. I'll continue to bring it to your attention. Maybe it should have been brought to your attention at the meeting right now. Maybe I should have pulled you aside and said something. But again, it goes to the, to, to, to the point of, we have to do something in our business. Maybe this is a big project that you can work on on your way out of making sure that we bring people to the table and that we fix the climate culture so that people are not afraid to bring things to their attention. That's why I brought up some weeks ago about the whistle floor policy. Hopefully, y'all will put it on the desk so we can talk about it and start looking at it. Because this will help our history. At the end of February, I want the same thing, Mr. Smith, for this history to run smoothly for people to be happy and comfortable as teachers and scholars and going with families and doing their extensive experience of different kinds of schools. But unfortunately, there are things that happen that prevent that. And maybe it's not an R B scale thing, it feeling everybody feeling that way, but the fact that there is a, um, a small group that feels that way, we still have to address it. So all I can do is to bring it to you, bring it to my colleagues, and then we figure out how we're going to address it.
And I think that's very good. I think we need to continue to move on those with where we're at with everybody.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask one question against Ms. Dobbins?
Sure. I'm just trying to move along because I heard, we heard what you said.
But, uh, you know, I've seen these contact tracing apps. Is that something that we use? Because I, and I haven't, I don't, you want to have a say in one? Does that, does that tell who they may have contacted or how did that work?
Uh, honestly, I'm familiar with the apps, but what we have is an event record form and that's, um, how we get our initial report of who people have been in contact with. But then we interview the person, um, over the phone to gather more information. We also report to, um, the health department and they pick it up from there and do visual contact tracing.
Okay, I, you know, I'm quite familiar with the contact tracing app, but I was just wondering, with those, uh, contact tracer apps, do they give a name of, uh, who they may have been exposed by?
To my knowledge, no. Um, you know, sometimes the individuals, often the individual who is the positive case will tell the people themselves, but we don't tell. We've not told anybody they can't tell, uh, the supervisors can't tell about other employees. But if you yourself are positive and choose to share that information, that's...
It's only you.
But we, we don't, um, we don't do that.
Right.
You know, I think there's a dissection perhaps about how many total positives we've had in the system since we came back to work because, you know, right now we have only five total positives system wide. We, we do not have high numbers. We have quarantined like, uh, uh, over the entire period, um, like a hundred and ninety-something people. But there have only been a total of, um, I think it's thirty-eight positives system wide since like June the first. It is not high numbers. And just, just for your information, I know that Calum Row Middle School was one of the locations focused on earlier this evening. There's been one positive test the entire period in that school. So it is not a dirty disease infested location.
All right, thank you.
Got it. Yep.
I just have one quick question about COVID reporting. I was contacted by an ID person, a traveling ID person. And we all know that they go into several schools and, and come in contact with several people. The question to me was, they go into these schools not knowing what the COVID climate is, if you will? How many cases? What I'm facing? And then this particular employee asked about certain, another employee in the building and, uh, it was just like everybody froze. And they just, they wouldn't say anything. I, my point is this, I believe our employees might be confused about basically what you just said to us. What can, it can't be stated. But in my meeting with Mr. Smith last week, I still feel like we're going to bring employees back, students back, and parents having to make decisions. I think parents, I think if all those entities deserve to know the climate of a certain building. You know, if we have a big outbreak at Griffin High School, that's really the change thing. But if we only have the one isolated case at Calum Row Middle, then that's, we could party all night long, you know? But I, I think this employee that contacted me deserves to know what he or she might be walking into in that particular building.
But I, I think, and we did address this yesterday in our indicator message action. And we did put that out and talk about that. The issue really is this, when we get these numbers, get these reports, the people are asked to stay home. So when you walk into a building and they have had two or three cases, those people aren't there. The people who may have been exposed, there's a person level who need to be asked to go quarantine to see if they... They aren't there either. And I want to make sure as we do the reporting, that people don't misunderstand that you're not walking into a building that has, that has enough active cases. Just like you wouldn't know when you walk into Walmart or restaurant, anyplace else. It's out of the community. But as we get these reports, as we get people do the report, as they get the testing and do that, we're following the protocol. So if we did, we did put our list and said Griffin High had five cases since June, those five aren't in the building, average known that they had. And I want people to understand that if you're talking about going from building to building, it's not, it's not, I don't think the culture of the building is going to create more cases. That you walk into a building and think this is an unsafe building. I don't think that's, I don't think that's the proper understanding. And maybe the people who worked in there were, I think, got exposed somewhere, but then they're working, handling, recording the protocol. So I want to make sure it's understood correctly.
Well, I just, I just think based on, my conversation is that maybe our employees are, are just need clarification. Um, what, I mean, I, I, I get it, but, but based on the response of this employee that contacted me.
I know that, um, Mr. Pugh is going to post weekly our updated numbers and so that came out the first time last week. And I, I hope that will help. Um, but we really have not had high numbers at all.
Thank you.
Okay, there, we'll do, continue.
Unless you have additional questions.
After that, everything as far as...
I'll trade back over to Dr. Pugh.
Okay.
That's all I can do.
I understand.
The other link is, um, tied to the presentation in the bottom row. We, well, I wasn't able to, but it's just the FAQ document. It is attached to the assembly. And you also can get to it by the link and then there are the same FAQ questions that are at the back of the transition. Play it. Next slide. Uh, we also have put together an info plastic that gives the prevention strategies and practices, uh, that we will utilize. And this is kind of summarizing all those pieces into one document, uh, where it's talking about the mask and screening, the enhanced cleaning, what's happening in facilities, desertures, curriculum objectives and grading, extracurricular activities, love transportation, staying home when you have symptoms, and what happens if someone gets, uh, sick at school. So this is just putting all that information into one place, um, as a handbook record that we kept for our parents and families as they, uh, make their decision if they knew of the opportunity. Next slide. So at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Pugh to come over, uh, who's want to be sharing, uh, a presentation on how GSCS is prepared to welcome students back in person, right?
Hello, Gordon, thanks for here. We appreciate you letting me come share with you. We'll try to give you a little bit of context about a project that we've been working on. Uh, last Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we worked on a video that I'll share with you here in a bit after I do this. Uh, the purpose of that was to go around and talk to all the principals, to go around and see all the schools, uh, to video all of the different practices that we're putting in place at whatever time the students do come back. And obviously, that is, the goal is to get them back at some point, whatever you guys feel like can say enough and know you're doing your due diligence to keep everybody safe. Um, I'm the new guy, so hopefully that'll allow me to come in here and speak with objective, new, unbiased eyes. And I can't speak to anything that, that happened before I got here, but I can speak to what I've seen. Uh, and that's only been a few weeks worth, but that's what I'm going to be a little bit. I'm not a health expert, uh, but I'm going to share with you some quotes from some people who are health experts who have gone in the past four or five days and looked at our school and looked at our policies, uh, and, and commented on them. I've learned a lot in a hurry. I've learned things like you can't use bleach in a school because I come from an environment where we didn't do certain practices. Bleach was out of freedom. That you can't use aderent kids because it's, uh, in violation of the state health code. Um, I learned that our limit in men, what, kills COVID-19 in a minute forty seconds. Uh, and so that's why it's important that we spray it on surfaces when we leave classrooms because it kills it. Uh, and that's why that's the, the substance that we use. I have great empathy for everybody in this school system. I love this school system. Yeah, I'm a product of this school system. So I think we all agree, we're on the same team. We all love this school system and thankful for that. Um, and, uh, so I will share with you these quotes, uh, but our goal is to empower students to graduate college and be career ready. And I think as many times as we can say that, uh, we're better off. I, I have great empathy for the teachers. My mom taught this school... My mom taught this school system for thirty-three years. Uh, so, you know, I got big love for everybody, all parents who are going through a tough time. Um, so here's, here's my findings. Uh, this, this video will be those findings, but here's a couple of quotes, uh, that I've learned just in the last few days. Um, Nicole with Department of Public Health, DPH District Four. She said, "I think your plan is very well thought out. I'd like to do dental machine. It will be a great help. I feel like you've covered like a basis here. This plan will be put into action." Ashton Harris at the state level with DPH. She said, "Your plan is more detailed and more depth than many plans that we see." Uh, Quentin Westbrook, uh, Anthony walked through schools. I walked through as well because that's one of the days that I was filming and talking to principals and talking to teachers. Uh, and I know that they inspected some schools. Um, and one of those was the school that, that's been brought up, and I know that that school has been going through a leadership change. I know they've been without a principal for a while. That's like a shoe without a captain, and that's a challenging scenario. So I've got empathy for all teachers at Calum Middle. Um, but we went through schools and Quentin Westbrook said, he's the school safety coordinator for GMO, which is Georgia Emergency Management uh, and Homeland Security Agency. Uh, but Quentin Westbrook said, "Your school safety plans cover everything that the law requires and more. It was written with guidance from the CDC. We didn't ask for one of that. You're doing a great job." Um, Lynn Holt, uh, he's got a bunch of titles, Spalding County MPR Chief, EMA Director, and the Director of, uh, Spalding County's Homeland Security. He said, "Their Spalding County school system is proactive and has worked tirelessly to create the best and most comprehensive safety and security plans." We got experts saying that, but there's also data that things aren't perfect. Uh, and that's where I come in. I'm here to help with communication. Um, the story that I referenced, I went to Calum Road Middle School and I was filming people. And my question to them was, tell me how you feel about the prospect of students coming back at some point. Not tomorrow, but starting with the process of students coming back. I said, "I'm not gonna give you a script. Tell me in your own words, your thoughts about them coming back." And you guys will see that. And because Mr. Holmes, I heard you say at the last meeting two weeks ago, I want to hear it from every principal's mouth. So I wanted to give you guys that. I want to give you the communication that you need. Um, and so when I went, they said, "I can't say anything positive regards to students coming back because we don't have all we need." And I said, "Please tell me." I talked to their administrators. I said, "Please tell me everything that will make you feel better about students coming back." They told me, I took the evidence on my phone. I came straight to Anthony Agins. In the next two days, he had delivered or personally delivered himself every single thing and more that they asked for.
So, so that would be, Anthony did what?
Tuesday, I went to Calum Road Middle. Tuesday evening, I gave that to Anthony. Wednesday and Thursday, all of the needed items were delivered. He did a lot of that himself. He even, they, they, their teachers were not heavy with the little uh, bottles with the nozzle that you shake the hand sanitizer in. They preferred the pumps. So we swapped out every model in every classroom. We gave them the pumps. Uh, they also didn't like the hand sanitizer dispensers that you push because you have to touch it and get the sanitizer. And I did, don't misunderstand, I'm not calling them complaining. It's their preference. So he took the automatic ones that you don't have to touch. We're your sir. My job as a communicator is to hear problems and solve problems, to find data that provides solutions. And so that's what I'm trying to do. Uh, I know this is a tense time. I know there's a ton of emotion. I do know these people care and, and we want help. And, and so the communication is part of the gap. If we can get the data to the people that can fix it, I promise you we will. I'm not the hand sanitizer man, but I have a car and I'll deliver sanitizer if it's need. Okay, so we're a team, all of us together. Um, so we, I went back on Thursday. They gave me a soundbite. They said, you know, we have everything left. Yeah, so that was progress. And that's what we need to do. We need to build trust because people don't trust because of whatever reason. There's a number of those variables. But every time they tell us and we deliver, that'll build trust. And I build that culture that you referenced as well. So we, we're all in the same boat. We have, we all gotta go the same direction and, uh, I hope this video will help show you guys some of the things that are in place, uh, that are helping. I saw dental machines at at least four schools that were working. I didn't say that. They were working. They were, they were using them. Uh, so let's watch the video again. And thank you so much for letting me come and show this. Uh, and I hope it makes you as excited as it made me, uh, working on it in the evening and over the weekend because I was really fired up to show this to everybody.
Fashion group in Spalding County systems of students, parents, and community. And the flexibility of patches have been negotiated as COVID nineteen pandemic together. We're excited now to be able to offer a choice of returning to in-school, bringing on the classroom learning, or remove that home learning using Google Classroom. We're committed to providing quality educational experience while maintaining safety. Safety is paramount. Since April, we have been working with various local regulatory agencies and safety experts concerning our plan. We work with the Georgia Mercy Bank Agency, local fire departments, Melrose Office, the Georgia Department of Education, the Georgia Department of Public Health, and the local health department to review our plans and make direct updates to improve those. We'll continue to stay in contact with these agencies and use the information and resources they provide to mitigate this and destroy the mask screening.
We are excitedly prepared to welcome all our students back into our schools. There have been many adjustments, revisions, updated plans, and new safety measures. We're returning to our option one plan from this summer. At that time, fifty-seven percent of our students indicated that they would be returning back to in-person instruction. We'll soon ask you to take another survey before we want to explain your options and share highlights of all the measures we've taken to create a safe in-person learning environment.
The remote learning option will remain the same. Students could potentially add a new teacher as class fosters may adjust. Some teachers will focus on in-person learning and others will be dedicated to virtual education using Google Classroom. The same Chromebooks and Wi-Fi hotspots will be utilized. Lunch delivery by bus will be discontinued, but meal pickup at the school will still be available for virtual learning students. Virtual students may choose to participate in extracurricular activities.
Local and in-person educational experience will vary. Students will wear masks on the bus, in common areas, and when they are able to socially distance. Face coverings are part of the dress head.
Social distancing will be an important part of our plan to return to in-person schooling. Students have assigned seats in their classroom to help social distancing and contact tracing.
Students and staff members will between all service daily practices, wearing gloves, face covering, and other UBI. Lunch will be picked up by students and taken to their classroom where students may remain in their assigned seats and social distancing may be maintained. Class utensils will be used and food package will transport.
Medics will be in their classrooms. However, our students have flexibility and they use courtyards, common areas like cafeteria, or other large spacious rooms. Social distancing will be maintained.
Ten students will be kept in a cabin. Teachers and staff have been selling new devices as they return, and no one is waiting strictly for the day. Our staff have an consistent protocol that's approved by CDC and DPH. Visitors to schools will check in at the front office and a designated staff member, the first one to take a dear, will take their temperature of the infected infectious thermometer and ask the screening questions we adopt. Each student with a temperature screening monitor will assist. Infrared touchless thermometers have been used, and we are investing in new thermal cameras that will soon be installed in all schools. The cameras can detect and show vital signs of individuals instantly. The temperatures are displayed on a monitor as per students' app style.
But the transportation is not advised placed to social distance. For this reason, the driver and students will wear face covers on the bus. Additionally, hands on top will be given to all students as they enter the bus. Buses will be loaded in the back moving forward to minimize contact. As the drop is filled off, bus drivers will set aside services on the buses. As additional safety measure, the bus seat will be pre-treated to make a resistance to germs, viruses, bacteria, and mold.
School media stations will show students in a different way when they return. Book carts will be taken to classrooms for students to check out books. But also students will use the program Destiny Discover to place books of books, and those books will also be delivered to the classroom. Many skills may be taught in the classroom or in the Google classroom.
This is the challenge behind it. Some students may have social or emotional needs. All counseling and social services will be available for in-person and online students.
Another component of the safety plan is personal hand sanitizing. Students are encouraged to wash their hands often. They'll be given ample opportunity to wash their hands and use hand sanitizer throughout the day. All classrooms have hand sanitizers in common areas, and all schools have new hand sanitizer specimens.
If a student tests positive for COVID nineteen, they'll turn in a definition of close contact and quarantine for fourteen days. Close contact is defined by being within six feet of an infected person for more than fifteen minutes. This is why students will have consistent assigned seating. If a student tests positive, only the student within six feet of them will be quarantined. Only if multiple students in the same classroom test positive, will the entire class be quarantined. While quarantined, students will return to virtual schools and use Google Classroom. Now I'm happy to share some details that I'm sure will be of interest to many. We currently have eighty-four of eighty-seven alight custodian positions filled, and we have twenty bus drivers who are in custodian training. We also have one temporary employee that will be coming home, some will have eighty-five or eighty-seven. Training equipment is kept ahead of the equipment operation. These bus drivers will add additional manpower during the middle of the day and serve as subs when needed. Residents will be cleaned at least three times a day. Common areas will be carefully cleaned and disinfected by traditional methods. Also, new equipment will be used to sanitize common areas regularly, in all classrooms at least once a week. A power strike generator that's connected to this door like this one has been purchased for your school. As you can see, this machine might sanitize them quick and efficiently. We thought you might like to hear a teacher's perspective here from the principals of these buildings about how they feel about to have students back at their school buildings.
Hi, parents and students. It's Miss Freeman. Um, I just wanted to take the time to let you guys know that I absolutely love virtual learning. Um, it definitely has been an adjustment and learning curve, but we cannot wait to have students back in person to continue the learning process.
As featured, we've been asked to sanitize desks and all surfaces to minimize the risk of COVID. Leave all the other planes up to the custodians.
We're planned, we're prepared, and I think we are ready to go.
We are preparing right now really hard for kids to return back to school.
We have a great safety plan in place, and we're excited about seeing our scholars back in our building.
We have received a lot of people who are confident that our building is safe, and we have everything we need to go here and keep them safe.
Chris, I can't wait to have our students back in the building.
We're ready to go at Everbrook, and we are so excited about seeing the kids come back to school.
We're ready. We can't wait to have the students back in our building.
We are excited and prepared about the things we have in place to prepare for our students to come back.
Our names have been learned diligently to prepare for your safe return, and we cannot wait to see you.
Parents, thank you as a party. We have a great plan for students coming out of our building. Students, we love you and we miss you.
We are so excited to be taking steps to welcome our Eagles back to the nest.
Our fellow mentor teachers are prepared for our students to retire to the building.
We can't wait for you to retire. It's just not the same without you here.
We've been in shock, students, very much. We are excited about the possibility of their, their return.
We are excited about doing our kid's life here at Griffin High School to continue the education process face to face.
We have everything we need. It's all in place to help minimize risk. We can't wait to see children back here at school.
We are so looking forward to students coming back to school in Griffin Spalding County schools. Can't wait to see you come.
We actually have students in our building since May. We've gone through the protocol of the CDC, the Department of Public Health. Someone has a technical card as well as Griffin Spalding High School system. Students will sign them daily. We will take their temperature, then note if they have been exposed to any degree of COVID, as well as if they exhibit any symptoms of COVID.
We currently have hand sanitizers, lemon quaff in every classroom, and they're being used. We have the big wand sanitizers. All students back on the staff have been worried about wearing a mask.
We'll be reporting COVID nineteen numbers within the school system each Thursday. We'll provide these numbers to local media and post over our social media and our website. There's no magic number or specific threshold that we would use for mandatory retirement of all virtual education.
We will however continue to work weekly with Department of Public Health, GMO, local fire departments, Department of Education, CDC, and the governor's office, and we'll follow their guidelines.
We're committed to safety. Every student, parent, teacher, and staff member is important to us. Together, we are now down to seven hundred and thirty-six students, five thousand more than twenty-one families, one thousand four hundred and ninety-six staff members, and twenty schools who would want to. Please help us continue to show personal respect and all encouragement to work together.
Remember to wear your mask, practice social distancing, wash and sanitize your hands often. We administer temperature checks, we implement additional cleaning procedures, and we will work with government agencies and health experts. Please stay safe in school and out of school. Together.
We are working great. It's all that's wrong. Admitted to safety.
I saw a lot of, uh, principals working with their various task forces on their own personal plans. And my understanding is that this is the skeleton, the framework of the plan, and each school will have their own. And as I've heard folks talking, I know that we offer special education based on the need of students. The, uh, you know, their remedial classes, their gifted classes, and everything in between. And I imagine I'll be the same as we consider these different schools. Uh, some of them that I saw, their custodians were rock stars. They're killer. Sounds like there are some schools that don't, that may need a little extra attention, might need a little more supervision and guidance. Uh, but as a new guy, looking around, I felt really good about the school system overall. I felt like we've got a good plan. We've got seven weeks to fix any, any patches that can be made. Um, the overall sentiment was that people were excited and wanted to get students back. Uh, at least get the, the wheels within to get students back. I, I did want to mention, I used three contractors on this. It was, we divided and conquered because it was very quick turnover. Um, Ryan Miller was one. He's a product of this school system. His mom's a teacher here, good friend, talented fellow. He works for the county and city. Glad to have him around as a resource. Uh, he's an African-American gentleman, Diallo Washington, who I met through Steve Harvey's mentorship camps. He does a lot of Steve's. Personal videography, came down from Atlanta, good friend, breakout, African-American fellow. And then the third was England Hammy, who is a product of this, uh, school system, who's now a professor at, uh, University of Georgia, teaching videography. Another good, very, very great resource. So those were the three contractors. Thank you, guys. Very much.
So with all of that information, that brings us to the proposed recommendation, uh, from the start of school task force. Uh, and we are recommending that we implement in-person in two phases. The first phase will be targeted special education students for September twenty-eighth. And the second phase will be all of other students starting on Monday, October nineteenth, to attend in-person. We will continue to offer remote learning for students who would like to continue with remote learning format. We will continue to offer remote learning for students who would like to continue with remote learning format. At this time, I would like to ask Charles Kelly, the Special Education Secretary, to come forth to explain the reintegration plan, which is a part of the first phase of the regulation for our special education students.
We click, maybe go back to the pocket. Sorry. Did you just click the link? Thank you.
Alright, I guess I get to follow the Lil' Max video there. I'll be entertaining that. Apologize ahead of time. Alright, so, good evening, board chair, board members, Superintendent Smith, and all of our staff guests. I'm here to provide details of the plan for reintegration for student facilities in special programs classes as part of the district-wide plan for all students. As the school year began in August, the district initiated services for students with disabilities through district learning programs. The services provided are direct services in parallel with students' current AP services. An added service, case management consultation, was provided to track progress of students and monitor student access to the curriculum. The district must offer free appropriate public education to all students identified with student disabilities. Appropriate access to the curriculum is one key component of the determination of whether faith in providing students. Following the Georgia Department of Education guidance on a phase reentry, the district began a process of identifying students with disabilities that may have the most difficulty with accessing the curriculum through remote online. The district's Phase Reintegration Plan identifies students with severe emotional behavior disorders, executive functioning deficits, and significant cognitive impairments, as needing early reentry because their disability may impact their ability to access the curriculum in a non-traditional setting. Students in these groups require large amounts of direct instruction, utilizing hands-on materials and concrete examples to acquire new skills and information. Many have severe communication deficits, limiting their receptive or expressive communication with peers or instructors. Students in these groups also have compromised basic learning skills, either because of severe intellectual behavioral deficits or lack of educational environmental exposure. The district believes that students that have educational benefits, services outlined in each student's individualized district learning plan, but the impact of disabilities of identifying students with disabilities impacts access greater than other groups of students with disabilities or students without disabilities, and justifies an earlier reentry. Following the Phase Reintegration Plan, students in the updated curriculum Self-contained Middle School Academic Program, Special Needs Preschool Programs, General Curriculum Self-contained Institute Servicer G N S, will be brought back to school for in-person full-day instruction. Full-day instruction, sorry. In-person instruction will occur on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday during the week of September twenty-eighth, and Monday and Wednesday during the week of October fifth. These management services will still be provided on days that students are not at school during this period. Transportation will be available for all students that elect to attend in-person instruction. A rotation of district special education staff will be available to provide support to the teachers and school administrators during this two-week period. The plan will be in effect from September twenty-eighth until the full reintegration of students on October nineteenth. The total days of in-person instruction for students in the identified group will be five days. A total of two hundred and forty-one students will be able to return to in-person instruction at fifteen of eighteen school sites in the district. The highest number of students who could play at any one site during this period will be fifty-five at M T Academy, while at Becker High, we're there. The fewest number of students will be five at three of these schools. Thank you for all these quick nine-hour inquiries. I'll answer any questions that you have.
Any questions, Corvus?
Thank you very much.
Uh, I have one, uh, with, uh, Mr. Kelly. And I refer to, uh, page eleven of the plan. I had made a rotation. And, and I shared with Mr. Smith about my concerns about personnel that may need to, uh, provide services in students' homes. And I think Mr. Smith told me it was a limited number of, if I correct. But I was, I was looking to know, uh, what type of P P E would these people come and say that the department had to provide that personal P P E equipment to address more risks to service providers who might go into homes. Uh, what are we gonna do next to try to make sure those people feel comfortable going to visit a home that they have no idea of what's going on? Just like we talked about earlier, IT people going to school don't really know what's going on. So what, what, what type of P P E are we gonna equip them with? How often, if, if, just, I know you may not have an exact number. How often do you think that's gonna occur when they have to go and visit students' homes?
So earlier, we don't have, uh, we do not have plans to go into homes to provide services. There was some conversation initially about that potential. But we moved into the virtual phase, so we're not currently doing that. We do have staff members that are coming into closer contact with students, like psychologists that do evaluations. We provided them with masks, with gloves, with face shields, and practitioners as well, so they have a flexible practitioner between them and the students, because they are, they're testing students for extended period times of evaluation. So all those processes are in place for that. It's a limited amount of students that come in at the time.
Thank you.
Knowing that you may have a base of potential hospital home members.
Right, yeah, that's really all that you got.
So you've got those same types of P P E that would be available to them. But it's very limited.
If the recommendation is approved by the Board of Education, we'll launch the G S C S Learning House Session Fund that is pictured in the document that's slide. An example of that is pictured here. If this approved, this thing will go out tomorrow morning. We did indicate in the timeline that parents and parents will have ten days to respond to the survey, and then there will be follow-up contact with parents, because we will want to have a response from parents every single day. The one, if it is launched tomorrow, and will close on Friday, September eleventh, through which will be the ten-day period. Our parents and mothers, we should complete the form to select to their in-person learning or remote learning for the remainder of first semester. Once this election is made, students will remain in their selected model through the end of first semester that concludes on December eighteenth. Next line. Any questions?
Any questions?
I know, I think I've spoken to several people about the idea that was presented to me, and I've had it myself. Would there, could we also perhaps, I only bring the feedback on the twenty-eighth, but I know some of the horror stories I hear about pre-K K and one trying to sign in and log in. I know as a former educator, I know that those pre-K K and ones, getting them to go in the right direction in the hallway and not go down a certain, you know, the protocols that they have to learn are, it takes so long for them to get into the routine of school. Could we perhaps maybe consider pre-K K and one coming back with Fed? I know that's been presented to me by some of the administrators in the county. I think it would be a really good dry run, so to speak.
We did talk at length, um, that was, uh, over two-day period that you're about to phase in. A lot of discussion around phase and students, and some of the options that we did discuss, as I don't know, was looking at the lower grades. We also talked about some transition grades, said ninth grade. And so there was a lot of discussion around that topic. I also, in reference to, uh, well, the recommendation of the task force after that conversation, this was landed with a special target population, you know, with our special education students and all other students coming on October nineteenth. I did personally call every principal and speak with them about the recommendation that was coming for prior to us bringing it, because I wanted to make sure that we administered anything, that we made sure that we got their feedback, as to what they thought, in reference to what the task force had decided to bring forward. And with that, the principals and that conversation, I look great in reference to October nineteenth, that looking at the seven-point timeline, they don't like, that would give enough time for them to be ready for all students. There are also conversations about being able to have their small population with a special education student, who is going to allow them to focus on that group of students and look at any other possible leads that they may need to prepare for a key year before October nineteen. We also had discussions around in the task force, using our October ninth, you know, which is a district professional opening day currently on the calendar. We're looking at ways to, we know we have some contracted services that we have already, uh, lined up for that day, where we're looking to try to remove all other non-contracted services off that day to allow that day to be more of a planning day for teachers to prepare for the break to receive students on October nineteenth after the break.
Okay, that's, if you contacted anyone, I applaud you for doing that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Corvus?
I have a quick question to finish. Originally, we had at least forty-three percent that wanted to be virtual.
Yes.
Obviously, we're going to send this survey out, and they're going to have to make a decision again. Is there a certain percentage that we need to achieve to feel as though we can get to back to, you know, is there a percentage there that if they decide to go virtual? Like, if we had eighty percent that want to go back to virtual, or they're done with something, or virtual learning, is there a number for that, or are we prepared to go with whatever we have?
We were prepared to move forward with what that percentage is that comes in. We did have conversations around the possibility of there being an increase in the forty-three percent, so we did discuss that as well. But we are prepared to move forward with the in-person option. And we are going to plan on the, even when the survey closes at the ten days, that students would make contact with them once they're responded, because we will need to have a response from each now.
And you're, you're talking about a decrease?
As far as a targeted decrease? In that conversation, we did not believe that we would have less. I think more of a conversation, I know there are a few people here that are on the task force, and was thinking that there would possibly be an increase.
I mean, uh, you know, with, with the change in data, I think it would be improving, because, uh, you know, we started our kids wouldn't, uh, be at a high rate of contracting COVID. And we've seen schools open up, turn around, and close, and, and people have had a change in mind. Matter of fact, I was just reading, reading, uh, something from someone that sent all of us an email, uh, you know, and I think it was a teacher. I think it was a teacher, and, you know, that they, they are not in favor of returning back to class. And I think, and really, I think what we've seen through, uh, some emails, at least now, some people have had a change in heart, because they've, they've seen the numbers go up in schools that have actually started in schools and ended up having to, uh, close down and, uh, because of the, uh, the numbers that they had. So I, I think it would be improving for you all to look at both, both scenarios, because you really don't, you really won't know until you do the survey. So, so why not be reactive instead of being proactive? So I think, I think that conversation should have been, should have been had, because nothing is concrete. Uh, we should, we should be prepared for either, either option, you know. I'm like, Mr., if it did go up, how would we be able to respond as far as social distancing? If they did, uh, we did have more people that wanted to in school. How are we gonna respond? But then, how are we gonna, how are we gonna respond if you have, uh, I guess we already doing it, because everybody's doing virtual, uh, remote learning. So that wouldn't be a hard adjustment, but, uh, uh, I think the people that are returning back to school is, if we have more than we probably expect from the first survey, uh, that, that's going, that's going, you know, kind of adjust the plan a little bit, because we're not going to be able to do social distancing as the plan is presented. So I'm glad you all did look at that, but, uh, you know, we, we should always look at both sides of the coin.
Well, I'm just saying, if I discussed it, Mr. Holmes, with our thoughts were that we would, we thought that we would have more than an increase. If we have an increase, we are already currently in remote learning. So there's, and then we also, the act of socially distancing even more. So we're foreseeing that would be a main issue to us. We already are in a current operational plane with remote learning. Uh, but if we have an increase, and that's why, uh, at the beginning of the presentation, uh, it was important to note that the things that we had to focus on were the action strategies, because it's not, and, 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 it's not yet a situation that's gonna happen this weekend. And we can see that just from what has happened with every system that has ventured into the in-person, uh, learning situation environment. So our focus is on social distancing. If we cannot maintain social distancing, we have to have face covers, which is something that several districts did not require. If you look at the patterns to what has occurred in multiple school systems that have gone into an in-person environment, they strongly encouraged, but they did not require. If you can't have social distancing, you have to have face codes as a combination strength. The cleaning, the hygiene, the monitoring of systems, and making sure we have the code response protocol in place. That's what our focus has to be on, regardless of how many numbers of students come in for in-person learning.
Yes.
But I just want to be sure I understand, but this, in what you presented this evening, masks are required?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
That is correct. That was one of our communication strategies that we felt it was imperative that we included in the plan.
Okay, very good. Thank you. There were also, just to make it clear, if you do adopt this tonight, there are two additional actions that follow this. One of those is a, is a mandatory dress code policy that will allow administrators to acquire masks, so we need that covered when doing. The second one has to do with the thermal cameras, that you saw in the video, where we need approval to purchase those, put those in place. And all of those two pieces sitting out there. I also add, what Dr. Kendra said about, we, we did look at the idea that we could have multiple coming in the building, and less, or whatever. But it also falls into our staffing strategy as well, because there may have to be some creative ways to staff and work and free up positions depending on how those members fall. So there are a lot of things we can do to help mitigate even the staffing, even the staffing test.
And that was a lot of discussion on that. This is why we And that was a lot of discussion around that. This is why we see a flexible staffing problem that we decided upon.
I know that, um, some of the discussion I had with my fellow board members, it's not so much the plan. The plan isn't going to be good. It's the implementation of that plan and how that works. And so I know that, um, even before we go any farther with this, that we have two more board meetings coming up. One's going to be on the fifteenth, one in October. Uh, that we discussed possibly being able to sit school in person prior to maybe a board meeting to be able to see some of those things in place and the importance to bring the confidence level that, you know, the plan that we have is great, but we want to continue to see that in person too. And I think that, that would be important. Anything else, Corbin? We have a recommendation then?
Well, I, I just want to ask, is this the time for us to discuss and ask questions?
About the plan? Well, I mean, if you, if it's about the plan, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Uh, I did have a couple, you know, to, to ask about, and I apologize. I have to look through my pages. I got, I like it, you know, to make sure they all got answered. And, uh, thank you to, uh, Mr. P for that wonderful presentation. I think you might be able to be up for Academy Awards. One, one, one thing I had was, uh, into middle school, let me see, period, uh, uh, eighteen. One thing I had was in middle school where I read about the teachers moving and students remaining in one classroom. Uh, and I had a question, how, how would we, uh, expecting the middle school teachers, uh, to move from one room to the other? And they have, they have supplies that they have to take with them. And they have, uh, probably already set up their rooms to be as safe as possible. So was that taken into consideration when that was put into the plan about teachers moving, rotating, setting up the students? How, how would that, how would that affect them? But I know some teachers, you know, they have the love, supplies and whatever, did you have any consideration to give, uh, toward that?
Yes, and, uh, you will know in that section it says to the extent possible. This was one of the recommendations that came out from CDC as well as the Georgia Public Health Department was minimizing, uh, student travel within the school building. So we know that at middle and high school, we would have more difficulty, uh, with that, uh, at the secondary levels. Uh, so that's why that, that comment is there is to the extent possible, those are the things that principals will be working through with their staffs as they develop their school level operating plans. As if, if that's possible, of which teachers that may end up in, uh, the determinant would depend on their, uh, school specifically.
Okay. Um, uh, there was a safety code file on page twenty-one. And I, I knew it's like here, uh, water fountain that been, I guess, taped off. Have, have we gave any consideration to, uh, retrofitting, uh, water fountain to the touchless? I, I know, uh, Kurt, that Anthony wouldn't make me think of that. Everything he changed out there, hand sanitizer going, uh, to the office to that. And having to push to get it to the automatic, have, have we considered retrofitting the water fountain to a touchless? Uh, I, 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 I heard some others, six of them.
Yeah, you feel water bottle.
Have done that, and you feel water bottle, have, have you looked into that or considered that?
Yes, I would, would continue to look into that of one of the brands that we looked at along our water fountains. We have to consider that we have different brands of water fountains, so we have to try to look. One particular is called LK, you know, K, but we have a good number of those. Rather consistently, that's one that we are looking at to possibly retrofit of those. Can't say for sure, Mr. Holmes, is it a touchless, but it is a one-touch, it's easy to push with elbow or?
Field station, right?
Yeah.
Field station.
Yes.
Possible to be ready for a fit.
Oh, uh, I think that's, that's it, Mr. Chair. I, I just want to make sure, uh, I covered everything.
I want to, want to. On the, on the same page, Dr. K, on page twenty-one, I have transportation, the second bullet is buses will be cleaned and disinfected daily. I would hope they would be disinfected after the AM run and then again after the PM run?
That's correct.
Okay. All of this, okay?
That's correct. Yeah, and I, that, that is filled out somewhere else. I think this is the, uh, claim in a statement. But it's, it's, oh, I know where it's at. I have too many documents. I'm sorry. It is actually on our million dollar, um, COVID nineteen prevention strategies and practices on this document for transportation, buses, clean, disinfected data, I would claim in dismissal, right?
So it was, this is a big thing, that's the first thing.
Yes, yes, I've seen all the strategies, yes.
There, uh, I found one that I would look at the, uh, page nine in the claim where it says principals will, uh, re-robust students whose teacher is unable to conduct in-person instruction due to accommodation. What, give you a little more detail than what that claim was in favor towards, um, re-robust students?
It would, uh, currently, if we come back, that would be at the cause of the nine-week period. And so, and then not only that, we have teachers who are still, that may not be able to come in person, but they have students that they're kind of teaching that may opt to come in person. Uh, then we would have to reassign those students to an in-person teacher.
And, and, uh, Dr. Kennedy, so how are we going to go about, uh, I know we want to survey the students, parents and students about what is their preference, you know, in school, uh, virtual? Are we, are we, uh, surveying the teachers as well? How, how are we doing that?
Uh, one thing that does, uh, then, uh, when we get a, uh, teacher's feedback around the skills assessment, um, that, uh, principals will have utilized and have the conversations to determine, um, how teachers, uh, will be identified, whether that's as an over-teacher or a, um, in-person teacher. And also will, some teachers may be doing both, uh, depending on, uh, what certification possibly they have or if they Miguel Singleton in that particular building, um, because we do have several teachers that are in that situation as well. So we can utilize the mixture of data points, the skill, uh, skill assessment that teachers have, uh, completed certification will also be looked at as, um, principals, uh, what would staff and, uh, people resources to determine how the staff and how we look for their building.
Let me just, to take back on that, I have a question. You said that they could do both. They're not doing both at the same time. They're doing A-class that can be remote and then A-class that could be?
It's possible in that regard, or it could be where students, just like how we just did this board meeting, that you have, uh, students in the group of needs as the teacher is teaching the in-person students. The students are there, almost like a similar to what you see in a distance learning class setup.
Excuse me. Will you allow your students to wear your face shields?
Now, we will have, and there's students that may need an accommodation, just like staff. Uh, some of our staff, uh, members need accommodations in reference to they have some type of medical issue, uh, that will go to follow-up process. And then there are different, um, accommodation could be made, including face shield depending on what the situation is being with the student.
I got, I got, it really not questions, Dr. Kennedy, uh, then I get to the comments or give you my, give you my opinion.
Yes, sir.
On a couple of things, and, uh, one is, uh, the phasing process. I know this, Matt Don, uh, touched on it a little bit, but, but, uh, aside from the, from the principals on how this, because we, we heard from, uh, some, some, some teachers that felt the need to come and, and speak about what they're being, uh, asked to do. From this phasing, and I think, I, 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 again, I agree with Miss Matt Don that we should kind of phase it in with the younger kids, special needs, uh, and then we progress on to middle school and high school, however. But, but to have an influx of everybody coming back at the same time and we're having to do this social distancing, uh, you know, disinfecting, cleaning and all of that. I, I, I just feel like that would be a bitch too much going from, going from zero to a hundred. I, I think it would be easier to go from zero to twenty-five or fifty, uh, instead of going from zero to a hundred and then everybody just, whether it's eighty percent, fifty-seven or sixty, uh, if they've been doing virtual. But I, I just, I, I'm just thinking about who's going to be actually doing this at the school level, uh, how it's going to impact them. Uh, that, that is, that is my opinion about that. Another thing that I mentioned to Mr. Smith, this, 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 uh, in-person remote learning plan is, is detailed. But, but what, what I'm used to is what I've seen and what, what is, what is done, uh, in public safety is we have a, a standard operating procedure. It is just a one-page booklet, uh, of, of what the day should look like from the time you get to work, what are you expecting to do? Who's going to be, you know, checking temperature, who, you know, it just, it, it's not as detailed as on this plan. But it's a one, one-page booklet that a person, uh, could just look at and see how I'm supposed to be doing. This is what's supposed to be happening, uh, you know, when I first get to, get to work without having to go and research the different sections to find out what they're supposed to do. It just tells you that to consider, uh, you know, doing, doing a one-page booklet, standard operating procedure, they call it the XOP. Uh, so it can kind of simplify this document into something that a person can just pick up. And I see where you all have done something similar to that, of course, to simplify self-employee self-screen. But I, I think it needs to be done for what should happen in the course of the day that a person can just pick up and, and look at it without having to go through the detailed plan.
Thank you for that, Mr. Chair.
Anything else, Corbin? Okay, when we have a recommendation, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would like to motion, make a motion that, uh, the school system, uh, is giving the okay to go ahead and, uh, proceed with this transition to in-person remote learning plan. But I also like to, uh, add a stipulation that if, uh, the board is not satisfied that this is going as planned, that we have the option to go ahead and put a halt to, uh, uh, the in-person, uh, coming back into the field apart and continue their remote. That, that's, that's, that's my motion.
Well, we definitely have a couple of meetings between now and, and the implementation of this. And it is going to be the responsibility of the, of the staff to, to have everything in place and answer those questions. And I think those walkthroughs hopefully will bring some reassurance and confidence to that. All right, so I have a motion?
Second.
In a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank the task force for the board, and this is tremendous. And I'm sure we have to be able to, you know, the board raised this discussion, which is important to our protection. So I'm just quite, uh, we're particularly on, uh, I'm, uh, like our teachers are being known for a tremendous, well, the way they're doing. They're responding to the more from them to transition from physical to mobile. And Sergio said in her presentation last week, she was trying to, I'm sure, I like, she, the teacher. Just like, if I can make it, so we lose all our teachers, we lose the task force.
No, it's good. Um, Mr. Chair, I, 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 uh, I wasn't going to say it, but I, I don't like to take yourself on. I don't have a dog to keep, so I have to take it out on the wire, so I'm not going to take it out on the wire. So I'm going to leave it here. Uh, if, 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 at the onset, I'm just speaking for me, no one else, just speaking for me. If, if I had to receive this detailed plan and, and was assured that we were given the equipment and we were getting, uh, the necessary processes in place, I, I would have, I would have probably voted a little different. If this was presented on the onset, not throwing anybody under the bus. I'm just, I'm just stating how I feel about it, how this thing has progressed. Uh, thi- this is all I wanted to see. Uh, but I, I, I have to take it a little further. Uh, I'm not just going to, uh, and I told this to Mr. Smith and I, and I relayed it to the board members. I'm, I'm not just going to be satisfied with the presentation. Uh, thi- this is something that, that, that I would personally make sure, uh, it, it is, it is, uh, monitored. It is revisited and we see with our eyes that it's happening as it's been presented on paper and, and in PowerPoint. Thi- this is something that we cannot just, uh, leave in the, in the hands of saying that it's only gets done. We're going to have to make sure that it gets done because this, this is something that, uh, can affect people lives. And, and I, and I, and I'm not wanting to, we want to put people in, uh, a compromised position uh, because someone has failed to actually lay eyes on what's supposed to be done. So, so this is something that I was looking for, but I want to take it a step further. We need to, as board members, we have, have to make sure that it's being done. We, we can't just sit in the boardroom and be satisfied with the presentation. We have to follow up and make sure things are being adhered to, uh, as presented to us tonight. Thank you.
Jeff, Don?
I think I did, anyway, I'm a teacher right now. This is something that I've shared with the chair prior to the meeting.
Let's see, if you will, you can say it, Mike, because people are laughing about that here.
Thank you. This is something I've shared with Mr. Don prior to the meeting. If it takes Sue McDonald having a Zoom meeting with A Street teachers on this board, Brooklyn Road teachers on this board, Spalding High, that's exactly what I suggest that we possibly do. Because I think the teachers will know whether we are ready. With their clean lassative buildings, with the, with the equipment they need to use, with the, all the infrastructure that, that a teacher needs in a building, and, and everyone in this room knows I'm a teacher advocate. And as long as they're pressing me, I will be. So if it takes Zoom meetings for, for two weeks to convince me that we're, we're ready, then I, I'm willing to do that. And I just wanted to make that public. That's something I discussed with the chair prior to this meeting. Thanks.
Good luck.
Yeah, so I think that's a good idea, Miss Matt Don, since each school has their own task force, that they present to the Board of Education so that we can get from there. that they present to the Board of Education so that we can hear from them that they are ready, that things, conditions are approved, and, um, you know, I'm excited because we have done a lot of work, a lot of work they've put into this, and so hopefully we're able to move forward, and it will be a win-win situation for, for everybody. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just make sure to write it clear what motion is on the floor, because I got confused a little bit with, and Mr. Holmes said, my understanding is the motion on the floor is to approve the super teacher recommendation for the re-alignment, but I just feel like he's...
That's correct. And what Mr. Holmes mentioned, I just wanted to reassure him that we have a couple of meetings between now and then, whatever we might want to do. Uh, all right, we have a motion in a second then. All voters, if I already do a pink card, or can? All right, two five oh.
Mr. Chair, back in all this follow-up, or Mr. Holmes said, because we've understood that it is all an execution plan. And so we want to be comfortable ourselves as we move forward in the next seven weeks. If we're not saying something that becomes a real concern that jeopardizes the, the builtness of the school's success. So we've got every, we've got every reason we want to do the same thing that you did. I want to thank Dr. Kennedy and the task force, because they have, I'm, I, I've actually got how many meetings been in, in the six or seven, I believe, in the last two and a half, three weeks, plus the subcommittee meetings on this as well. This was done, uh, a lot of work is done while at the same time we were working to get remote learning works, and that is also going to step while we're working in this environment too. So I want to thank Dr. Kennedy and all the work that her in this, because the work, the work they did was truly, uh, Herculean task before this year, and I appreciate Mr. Holmes's comments, because you got to be able to execute, the plan is got to be detailed as well. And so when we've had the plan looked at, bodies outside of, they've given us the feedback on that, that's really not going to be always stopped. We saw some, some, uh, footage of Clint Westwood walking through our building, the pole out there. Those are going to continue as they see how well it's actually put in place and what the result of it is. So those walkthroughs were just, that, that wasn't anywhere near the end of that. We want to work very closely with those agencies and to use the resources that they have to make our plan better and make it more effective. So that is definitely a piece of this. But thank you, Dr. Kennedy, and I'm grateful.
Thank you, and I'd just have to commend the Scottish Schools Task Force. I can't leave them up here. Uh, all of the R O R, all of the members of the subcommittee, uh, be, thank you for all of the work that you've put in and all the time that you've given to, uh, this point for our students and staff. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Board members, we'll move on to the revision, uh, to the policy of the J C D B R one and R two. Uh, Mr. Anthony Aiken.
Sorry, I'm trying to get this right, I'm a little off on the record. All right, the first, uh, actually, the one thing we have is for a revision to the G I P R S code policy, uh, J C D B, and we're asking, uh, in this that the school system administration, um, they're authorized to require the use of face coverings by students in order to prevent the, the spread of infectious disease.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a question.
Point out, normally a council revision requires three days of the table rest to do this as emergency, because it does give the plan to try to put in place there here in the urgency to have this done. We talked about wearing this, oh, oh, it's just really not that good.
Got someone? Uh, I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Uh, any further discussion? All voters, if I already do a pink card? Wonderful, be five oh. Then we'll move on to the thermographic cameras first.
I suppose I can show this way in pretty clear. Um, this is... I just want to help you all in your votes. Uh, thermographic cameras is one of the things that we're looking forward to assist with not only the, um, temperature checks coming in, it's streamlined this far so that we're not having to have someone there checking each student's coming in. Uh, the thermographic cameras that we looked at will serve to check, uh, I think it's seventy-two per minute coming through. Um, you actually saw a piece of it over the demo where it faced it, faces on the face. He was due to calling it a bloody hot liquid, did not pick up just the face. Uh, the other piece that it does do for us, uh, it will sound an alert if someone else couldn't even without a mask on to tell them that they are not wearing a mask, so just alerts us for that. Uh, the cameras that we're looking at, um, we, uh, Mr. Ballard, um, did the proposal out. We checked prices, I think about eight different prices. Um, uh, course zone was the lowest price. Uh, if you notice, it may have been a little confusing, he just totaled out because he got a color, um, unit price, and they didn't want to hit his total out of course though, because they were the lowest, um, by several, several hundred dollars. But it includes the thermal camera, it includes, uh, the N V R that goes with it, uh, includes the software that we need to operate. Uh, it also is a height vision. If you read anything about, uh, faithful, they determined that's the best one out there, that's the one we've used all along, and that's what I've said. It, it integrates with our security system already. Uh, so we're looking at that. Uh, with a total of two forty-nine thousand, where it's fifty-three dollars to purchase, the thermal camera is sufficient for each school to be able to check, uh, temperatures.
Okay. Any, any questions for me? Uh, they have a motion?
Some move.
I have a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. McDonald. Any further discussions? All the voters, if I already do a pink card?
That's a great move, thank you.
Be five oh. All right, board members, um, we'll move on to our information for the Georgia School Board Association. You got the four-page announcement. Uh, I did have conversation with, uh, Mr. Q about, you know, any changes, cosmetic that might need to be made. His recommendations are to do with it as is. He does want to provide a couple of links. One link, is he in the room? I just want to make sure. One link will be to a video of our system and the community so that it can, someone that is, you know, possibly looking can see that. And then the other link would be to some information about Spalding County and the, uh, economic development that has taken place there. So were there any other thoughts or comments about that? Are we good with it?
No, I was just, for the general public that's still watching, I would like for you to just go over the, uh, anticipated timeline, that, you know, it could have been to any point, just to go over that timeline to the general public.
Sure, and I think that we could probably make this timeline available on our website, but we haven't. Uh, but as we, uh, get the announcements together, we will submit it to, uh, G S B A this week. Uh, they will then put the announcement out on Monday of next week. Uh, board members, we also need to make a decision, and I think we're already in the unanimous of this, that we do want to do a community survey also. So they will, G S B A will give us, give us a copy of that so we can see what that look like. We will then try to post both the, uh, the announcement of the position and the survey, and those will run until the eighteenth of October. Uh, and then, uh, G S B A will deliver us the finalized applications in their tiered order that they talked about, uh, the week, uh, the perfect of November. We will then do our, uh, application process and do that. And we have a fourteen-day period of time that we have to allot within that, so, so we can get that proposed timeline out there for everybody. Everybody good?
Yes.
Real good? All right, um, a lot of information items that were here, uh, in your package, board members. Make sure that you look at all of this. Um, take just a minute for some, um, board members comments. I've sort of, I write with something on my left.
I want to say thank you to everyone who has worked on the reopening plans and presentations and subcommittees and everything. Thanks so much for your hard work to ensure that the scholars of this school district will be safe. Also, thank you so much for listening to the community and putting those parents and scholar on the reopening task force, and I'm looking forward to see what happens. Look for the comments.
I would like to back to the teachers for the tremendous job that they have done recently. Uh, I just hear so many positive comments from parents, from teachers, from students, it's been very trying. But teachers have risen to the occasion, and I had a quote recently that I want to share with you. You know, sometimes we draw from Chick-fil-A, uh, but I put my lips on your bags, and there's a quote on your bag that said, "You never know how strong you are until strong is the only option." And our teachers and our students, our university students, have all risen to the occasion and become extremely strong through the process, and I salute each one. It is not an easy task, but she's done it with grace, and please let her make sure we appreciate it. Thank you.
Go.
Uh, I echo what Mr. Stevens Brown said about the staff's hard work, but I, I also want to thank, uh, the board members for, uh, how we dealt with our differences, uh, how we dealt with this process. Uh, I, I've seen a lot worse than that right in itself. I've seen it go a lot worse to the left, but, uh, I just want to let you all know, I, I appreciate how we dealt with our differences, uh, and I'm always looking to reach a resolution that, that, that way, you know, each party can take away something. So I, I think we came to a workable revolution tonight. Uh, uh, I, 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 uh, really am proud to say that I, uh, you know, worked with the board that we need succumb to pressure, uh, that was put on us from, uh, various sources. And, uh, so I just want to say thank you to the board members for, for the work on how we got to this, this point, uh, about returning to school as well, and thanking the staff and super teacher for working together. Uh, it's not an easy process. We're uncharted waters, uh, but, you know, I, I'm always an optimistic person that, that we have prevailed. We may have to go through some things, we may have to lose some things, we may have to, um, you know, share some pain, but, but we can make it through. And, uh, I, I just think we just have to continue to operate like we are openly, honestly, uh, respecting each other's, uh, opinions and thoughts. So I, I say to everybody, who knows? And thank you for the hard work.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to thank you all, all, as I leave the meeting, thanks all of you in this room and outside this room that have contacted me, and I, when I met with Mr. Smith last week, there were a couple of things. Number one, everyone that has contacted me, they're not complaining, like Mr. Q said earlier. They're, they have concerns. So I thank you for letting me know those concerns so I can share with my colleagues and the system. So, so there's a big difference in concerns and complaints in my mind. You know, sometimes you just want to meet with people, that's, that's all they do is complain. These are just genuine concerns. And I would also ask that the board and this system, and I spoke to Mr. talked about this earlier, is that we consider, because I'd like to leave on good news, that we consider giving all of our certified staff a hundred and fifty-dollar stipend to get their classrooms ready for the, um, P T E they need in their own rooms to make their, their classrooms safer. And again, I brought this up many weeks ago, elementary furniture. It's not benign for social distancing with the tables, and I understand that they're still going to continue to do small group learning, which they should, and if we give, uh, money to our teachers to make their rooms safer and to make their furniture work for them, I think that, um, that would be something that we could do for our teachers. Because, you know, teachers can solve issues probably in just a matter of hours, buying a boss loan to say thanks. So I would hope that we would be able to do that. Hundred and fifty-dollar stipend for all of our certified staff to get their rooms ready with regard to, I've seen pictures on the internet where teachers are using clear shadow curtains to make that a little bit safer as far as, you know, social distancing. Uh, we've all seen the plexi glass, but I understand that that's in short supply. And I ask in our community, the schools that your children go to, just donate equipment to help make our teachers' rooms and their front, especially in the elementary schools where the, they do a lot of small group. Just donate materials to your school that your children go to. Although I think that'd be a great way we can bring us all together as we transition our kids back to school. So I would ask that we consider giving a hundred and fifty dollars to all of our certified staff, our community health, their local school where your children go, and, um, let's make our classrooms safer for the teachers that are going to be doing. And again, thank you to all.
I'd also like to give out all of the comments that went forward, all of our teachers and our work and administrators and the, uh, central office staff. Um, I know that this is, this situation, COVID, everything has taken up a lot of our time. I'm looking forward to be able to get back some of those other priorities that have, we have kind of put on the back burner, uh, but need to continue to address in our system, so. Um, the announcements there, they've already been said. Board members, we have one small item for executive session. It won't take very long, uh, so I would entertain a motion then to go into executive session.
Some move.
I have lots of, I have a second, but I missed one. So, so, first of all, the purpose, uh, um, remember, teacher value, personal value, um, and all that's identified by putting your hand on your pink